Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. We are now live. Mayor Wong, I don't think Benson has audio. Saleem, can you hear my audio? Craig, can, okay. Mr. Mayor, we are live. Are you able to hear us?
Jesse, you're on mute.
We could all hear Jesse. Benson, we can't hear you. Or we did, though, just a second ago.
Sorry, that, sorry, my fault. It's actually me.
Okay, we'll try that again. Mr. Mayor, we are now live.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening and welcome to the September 21, 2021 City Council regular video meeting. I'm Mayor Benson Wong. Tonight's virtual City Council meeting is being brought to you using video conferencing technology provided by Zoom, but also broadcasting live on MITV Channel 21 and on the city's YouTube channel. City Manager Jesse Bond and other staff members will be participating in tonight's meeting in the City Council chambers and maintaining the recommended social distance. Public audience members are listening to the meeting by telephone or using a Zoom teleconferencing application. Welcome to each of you and thank you for sharing some of your evening with us. Council members, please have your microphones turned on for the roll call. City Clerk DePistroda, please conduct the roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Benson Wong.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Wendy Wyker.
Here.
Councilmember Lisi Andrell.
Here.
Councilmember Jake Jacobson.
Here.
Councilmember Saleem Neese.
Here.
Councilmember Craig Reynolds.
Here.
And Councilmember Dave Rosenbaum.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. Council members, please stop your video or stand away from your camera so that the US flag is only thing visible. And please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now move to our first item of business, which is to approve the agenda. If there's no questions, may I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Don't move.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Neese and seconded by Deputy Mayor Wyker to approve tonight's agenda. City Clerk, will you please conduct the roll call vote?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Andrell.
Aye.
Mayor Wong.
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobson.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Wyker.
Aye.
Councilmember Neese.
Aye.
Councilmember Rosenbaum.
Aye.
And Councilmember Reynolds. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes and the agenda is approved. Tonight, we continue to utilize the Zoom platform. I'll do my best to recognize you in the order that you raise your hands. And after you've been recognized, then you can ask your questions. Next up on the agenda is the City Manager's report. City Manager?
Good evening again. Sorry, my camera is a little fussy tonight. It is September 21st. Give me a moment to share my screen. All right, there it is. All right, good evening again, City Council. Well, this is, there we go. I wanted to start tonight with an update on COVID-19 impacts to the city organization and a little bit about how we're retooling our services to not only focus on essential services, but also to support our community. So the first thing I wanted to share is that we did activate the Emergency Operations Center last week to Level 2. We had been at Level 3, which these are, these are terms that may not mean something to you or the community, but it basically describes how we are responding to the current emergency. So Level 3 was monitoring. We are back to Level 2, which is a partial activation. What that means to you and the community member is that I've had to redirect more resources, staff resources, to the pandemic and to support our Emergency Operations Center. Obviously, my main concern is continuing to prioritize essential services, and I'll remind you what essential services are in just a moment. We're led, our EOC team is led by the fabulous emergency manager Jennifer Franklin. So she has, you know, pulled everyone back together. They're meeting weekly. We are redirecting staff resources to support the EOC structure. I think it's important to remember that we are tracking our expenses and all of the time that is going to the emergency in anticipation of, you know, really being eligible to seek reimbursement through FEMA and also potentially applying ARPA funds to the support of the pandemic needs of the city. We are publishing monthly situation reports again, and we post those to our Let's Talk page. So essential services and whoops, why does this matter? I'll just share that we generally categories our public safety operations, police and fire as an essential service, roads and utilities, certainly keeping them open, our legal team, communications, our mental health services, our municipal court. It's important to know that jury trials are currently suspended through the end of the year, and parks maintenance, certainly during the pandemic. Many people have been enjoying our parks, so we want to do what we can to keep up on that. And then anything else and everything else we need to do internally to prop those teams up. So that is our primary focus. You know, why does this matter? Let me give you an example from our maintenance team right now. Nearly the entirety of our parks maintenance team is out at the moment. A couple due to, due to good family news, you know, babies that were born, and the rest are related to COVID impacts or kiddos at home that were exposed, you know, exposed to COVID. So what does this mean? Well, we've got a whole team down. We've got to pull resources from other teams. So it's a, it's a, you know, fine line. We're juggling trying to sustain the core, most important things, but considering the impact on maintenance right now, you may have seen around the city that things are starting to fall behind. We'll get back at it. I'm not concerned about that. These are just impacts that are happening at this moment in time. So that's a good segment to say, you know, we are being impacted by COVID, our staff teams, it's both, you know, we have had a couple positive cases. Nearly all of them are breakthrough, meaning it was a staff team member that was vaccinated. We have a large number of staff with kids under the age of 12, either in school district or daycare settings, and they have been exposed and oftentimes are required to quarantine. So we're doing our best. Everyone's pulling together, you know, to really make sure that our services are continuing to be delivered. But I will say, we thank everyone for their patience right now. I know it continues to be a hard time. So thank you for being flexible and understanding. And if you do have any questions about service levels and where the impacts are, I'd be more than happy to talk further about that. So in other news on COVID front, last week, King County Public Health issued a health order that will take effect on October 25th, requiring verification of full vaccination or a negative test, I believe it's within 72 hours, to enter certain indoor and outdoor venues. It applies to indoor dining at restaurants, bars, gyms, arts and entertainment venues, and generally large sporting events. In terms of the city, the community center will fall under this requirement because the type of activities that we're currently running, which are limited, fall under the category of gyms. So I know for the businesses that are working so hard in our community to keep going, this was just another requirement. We are, Sarah Bluvis, our Economic Development Coordinator, and Jennifer Franklin and our EOC team are doing everything we can to compile the information. We sent an email out to our business list last week, but we're also posting everything on our Let's Talk page. So the Seattle Metropolitan Chamber of Commerce has stepped up to help organize this and is partnering with King County to assist with the implementation. So as information is coming out from them, we'll be passing it along. We're, we're pushing out information on, you know, how does this work? What qualifies as proof of vaccination? And we understand there's, a toolkit is also coming out as well. So we're here to support you businesses, those of you that are impacted by this new order. And if there's any questions you have, we'd be happy, you know, to reach out to Public Health to try to get those questions answered. So again, I'd encourage anybody that's impacted by this to go to our Let's Talk page, and we'd be happy to support you on this. And we'll also be ensuring this is implemented by October 25th at the community center as well. All right, moving on from COVID, a quick snapshot of what's coming for City Council and Board and Commission meetings. As a reminder, the legislature did extend the proclamation relating to the Open Public Meetings Act. We continue, for reasons of safety, to meet virtually. I anticipate Council will be in a virtual meeting setting through the end of the year and do hope to be seeing you all in person at some point after January 1. Your next council meeting is October 5th. We have a really packed schedule of Board and Commission meetings from September and October. The dates are there. We keep the calendar updated at the website, posted at the bottom of this page as a reminder. I will also sneak in a comment for Board and Commission members that we're coming, we're coming your way with training on the Code of Ethics here very, very soon. So that will be deploying in October. Okay, and we have two open seats on our Board and Commission, so we're, we're back recruiting again. One Arts Council position and a position on the Design Commission, and this is one of our specialist positions. So we're specifically looking for somebody with a background in architecture, landscape architecture, urban planning, or civil engineering. We've reopened the recruitment. The deadline is October 5th. And Council, given that we're down to two positions now, I am optimistic that we can be in front of you October 9th, hopefully filling both of those seats. City service updates, just a handful for you this evening. First of all, a reminder, we have our next virtual public meeting on the Prose Plan on Tuesday, September 28th at 5:30. This is a Zoom meeting, so if you'd like to participate, the link below will get you into the registration queue. So, so please join us. This will likely be our last public meeting on the Prose Plan. And we've got some, some fun topics, hot topics queued up, playgrounds, docks, and I think the big one is the strategy to balance new park uses while also protecting our important green space. So again, Tuesday, September 28th, please register in advance, and the link is at the bottom of the screen. A project update for you. We haven't touched a whole lot on stormwater projects, so this is a good one. Last week, our Public Works crews began work on a stabilization project that spans over a quarter mile of stream channel that flows into Lake Washington. You can see a picture there of what it looks like. We had, in this particular stream channel, previously there were sandbags used as temporary control measures, and they've started to fail. So, and certainly that was negatively impacting our habitat. So our engineers and crews designed 15 stream bed structures made of basically logs and trees, very similar to that picture you see on your screen. And it's, it's intended to act like a log jam, so it slows down the water that's running through the stream channel and protects those banks from erosion. So we'll be keeping you posted on this project. And I understand we have something close to, I think, 20 more projects like this that will be worked over the next several years here on Mercer Island. My thanks to the staff for updating us on this project. We've been really focused on our transportation project updates, so thanks for getting this out. Also, wild swing here in topics. Just a reminder, next week, the Youth and Family School, Youth and Family Services School-based counselors are holding a parent support event this month in collaboration with Parent Edge. This is a short presentation, going over materials primarily to assist middle and high school parents in supporting their children this fall. All the kids are in a pretty big transition back to school. This is Monday, September 27th, 7 to 8 p.m., and if you'd like to join, the web link is at the bottom of the screen. All right, a couple good news items for you. I'm getting a little ahead of myself. The police chief said, I'm not ready to share this, but they've done such great work. I wanted to make sure we highlighted it. Every four years, our police department undergoes an accreditation process by the Washington Association of Sheriffs and Police Chiefs. This is a review of 134 standards in use of force, code of contact, and other things. And it's a best practice, first of all, to be accredited and get reaccredited to ensure that we're meeting, you know, best practices and standards. We had our onsite assessment last week. It went well. My compliments to Chief Holmes and his team. And we will receive official notification of the outcome of the accreditation process sometime in November. So my thanks to the police department. They've certainly been very busy, and I appreciate them prioritizing this work. At the thrift shop, hey, I think it's just great to highlight that we're, we're working on rebuilding the store. I think we are somewhere around six or seven weeks into reopening back to five days of sales at the thrift shop. We had a really fun Labor Day weekend I wanted to share with the community. But before I do, just a reminder, we have safety protocols still in place. So if you go shop at the thrift shop, and please do, masks are required. We have occupancy limited to 75%, and it is on cool days, a little cool in there because we've got doors and windows open to keep the air circulating. So that picture on the right is actually a shopper from Labor Day weekend with a photo of her receipt and all the things she bought. We had a great, a great sales day. It was almost $6,000 in sales, which is really, really good considering we're just six weeks back into this. I also have a lot of fun learning about the, the things that we're selling that are donated and selling. So here's a snapshot. Over the last couple of weeks, we sold, sold a $500 pair of Gucci tennis shoes. Somebody bought $120 worth of marbles. I don't know a lot about marbles, so that was interesting to me. And one of the great things is when they came to pick up their online sales item, they spent almost another $500 in the store. We've also had just an extraordinary donation of artwork and prints, and we sold a $450 print. So that's, that is great. We're working really hard to get, you know, the engine fully up and running again. Our focus now is turning to the donation pipeline. We've, we've still just been accepting donations one day a week, but we're looking at enhancing that very soon. So more information to come. Thank you to our amazing thrift shop volunteers and staff. I know it's been a long journey, but we're on our way. And looking forward to the winter, maybe not the change of weather. Right now, we had a great sunny day today, but Illuminate MI is on deck. Planning efforts have begun to bring back our socially-distanced and safe event in the town center, and I think we're also going to try to engage the South End Business District. You may recall from last year that a number of the trees were lit, and it was a great place to walk around in the evenings and certainly support our local businesses. So stay tuned for more information. By the way, if you're in the town center, whether you live there or you work there, you have a storefront, we'd love to ask you to think about lighting, lighting up your storefront or your, your window or your deck. Let's, let's all pull together and get into the festivities. So more coming on how you might get involved. And if you're interested in sponsoring this event, please reach out to Sarah Bluvis, our Economic Development Coordinator. Sneak peek, our, our lights, the lights that the city installs will be turning on the week of Thanksgiving. All right, and that is it for me this evening. Thank you all.
Thank you, Jesse. As it has been in the past 18 months, tonight's agenda will not be including any in-person public appearances. However, individuals wishing to speak live during the appearance portion of our meeting, they do so by telephone or by using the Zoom teleconferencing application, as long as they register their desire to speak with the City Clerk's office by 4:00 p.m. today. Our City Clerk will call you by name or by telephone number when it is your turn to speak. It's your opportunity to speak to the City Council on any item. Again, since it is election season, I want to remind you that state law, specifically RCW 42 dash, sorry, 42.17A.555 prohibits the use of city facilities for campaign-related purposes with very limited exceptions. Accordingly, please do not make any campaign-related comments during this time. All remarks will be addressed to the Council as a whole and not to any individual council member or staff member. If any person makes a personal impertinent or slanderous remark or becomes boisterous, threatening, or personally abusive while addressing the Council, I may ask that person to leave the meeting. When it is your turn to address the Council, be sure to speak audibly and state your name for the record. Your comments will be limited to three minutes, a three-minute timer should be visible on your computer screen. City Clerk, has anybody signed up to speak before the City Council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have two individuals that have requested to speak. We have Randy Bannaker and Tom Acker, and Randy is up first.
Great, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Randy.
Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor Wyker, members of the council, my name is Randy Bannaker. I'm reaching out to you tonight on behalf of the Seattle King County Realtors in support of the proposed Sign Code Amendment package before you today. First, I want to say that we believe the proposed, the proposed code amendments comply with the United States Supreme Court decision of Reed versus Gilbert, Arizona. Specific to, to our signs, I want to say that our members place a high value on the opportunity to work with homebuyers and sellers in the city of Mercer Island. We consider it, consider it in our mutual interest to support the city's efforts to maintain the high quality of life Mercer Island residents enjoy. We appreciate the allowance to post on-premises temporary real estate signage that advertises homes for sale, rent, or lease, and off-premises open house signage posted during open house hours. Just a few bullet points I wanted to cover related to real estate signs. First and foremost, signs play an important role in fair housing, anti-discrimination. Signs simply cannot discriminate. A real estate sign invites any person regardless of race, creed, color, sex, or national origin to locate and consider the purchase or rental of the property that's available if they can afford it. Real estate signs make it impossible for any broker, landlord, owner, or organization to deny that that property is available, and hence make discrimination substantially impossible. In addition, real estate signs, we find, remain critical for buyers and sellers. We find that more than half of buyers use signs to drive a neighborhood and get the, get the look and the feel. And so it's important. It has not been rendered, or I should say technology has not rendered signage irrelevant. Again, people want to get out and, and have that look and feel. Mercer Island is one of those places where addresses can be difficult to find, and so signage play an important role. Signs play an important role in just directing you to what's for sale. And I think in doing so, they simply speed the transaction, the time on market. That's good for the city. It's good for the seller, and it's good for the adjacent property owners. Lastly, I just note that we have an internal mechanism for side code compliance. If our brokers, any brokers out there violating the code, we have a way of contacting their organization, make sure they come into compliance, and understand the specifics of your code. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you very much, Randy. City Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, our final speaker is Mr. Tom Acker.
Audio test, can you hear me?
Yes, Tom, welcome.
Hey, Benson, it's really good to hear your voice and see you again. I'm calling in just to thank this county City Council more than any other city council that I've seen since 2012, 2013, when I moved back, insofar as we're finally getting serious about addressing the Town Center code issues. One of the things that was just phenomenal is when I started that Save Our Suburbs group back in 2013, within two months, we had 1,000 people on the island join to try and preserve the character and quality of Mercer Island. That was the parking garage that was being built at Luther Burbank was one objective, the city bus turnaround, which sounds like fell back on your laps, but at the time, we thought we had stopped it. And then the Heinz Development Project, because the retail corps wasn't being, was being squashed with every big development, we did a, there was a big study that showed how much retail we were losing. So the Save Our Suburbs morphed into the city realizing they had a problem. There was the Town Center Visioning Group, and then we ran into issues with the recommendations that nearly everybody wanted to see. Everybody wanted to see. They just died on the vine. They weren't listened to. They were backburnered. And I'm, I'm really glad to see that Saleem Neese, who, Councilmember Neese, who was on that Town Center Visioning Group, has really stepped in and led the charge to look at the codes. Anything that we can do to incentivize retail on the ground floor, as well as have intelligent design on the ground floor, which means putting in the right ventilation systems for potential restaurants, just making sure the building is built to support retail below, high ceilings for the retail spaces below. Any of that work that you can do and put in place in order for these developers to go up is appreciated. The, the days of the, the little fountains and the ponds that disappeared, like the one out in front of, I think it was the Hadley Building, that I was walking by, and they just took out their water feature. I told former Mayor Bassett at the time, well, take off their fourth or fifth floor then, because that's one of the features that they use to go up, but nobody noticed. And, and that's the problem, right? What they can notice and that they will notice is that if any more buildings go in, and they are going to go in, that we have better retail in the downtown center. So really wanted to thank So really wanted to thank all of you and especially Councilmember Nees for his leadership on, on looking at these issues. And I'm looking forward to some very significant changes in the code that will increase the retail down in the town center and not reduce it. Staying where we're at isn't an option anymore. We actually need to increase it because we've lost tens and tens of thousands of square feet retail. So thank you very much and many thanks to city manager Bond as well. It's been an amazing couple of years that you've had and you sort of inherited the hand grenade after the pin had been pulled. And somehow you managed to get that pin back in. So thank you all for your work and I will look forward to watching this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. So there's no other speakers. So now we are moving to the consent agenda. And that consent agenda tonight includes approval of certification of claims for periods ending August 26th, September 3 and September 9, 2021. The approval of claims reporting for tronic funds transfer for the month ending July 2021. Approval of minutes for the July 6th and July 20 regular meetings and our August 24 special meeting. The approval of payroll certifications. This is AB 5934 for the period ending August 27, 2021, and also AB 5945 for the period ending September 10, 2021. Includes, the consent agenda also includes AB 5924, the volunteer appreciation month. AB 5938, which is the 2021, 2022 work plan update. Does anybody wish to pull any item off the consent agenda? I am going to go ahead and pull agenda bill AB 5924. Accordingly, this agenda bill will be the first item that is discussed as part of regular business. Does anybody else wish to pull any other item off consent agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Jacobson and seconded by Councilmember Nees to approve the consent agenda as presented. City clerk, please conduct the roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, Councilmember Andrell?
Aye.
Councilmember Nees?
Aye.
Councilmember Rosenbaum?
Aye.
Mayor Wong?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Wyker?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobson?
Aye.
And Councilmember Reynolds?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Motion passes and consent agenda is approved.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize. I just wanted to let you know that the, the timer clock is stuck right now, so we have not been able to take it down. We're, we're working on it here behind the scenes, but I'll just suggest you keep going. And if we need a short recess, I will let you know.
Okay. I don't think it impacts our meeting at this point.
I may use it, I may use it later in the meeting, so.
Oh, okay.
Thank you for your patience.
All right. So the first item of regular business is AB 5924. This is the volunteer appreciation month proclamation number 276. And the reason why I pulled it off is given the importance of volunteers to the operation of our city government and all city services are provided to the community. I could not let this proclamation simply be adopted on the consent agenda. I think as most people know, we had planned to have a in-person, community-wide celebration in September 2, but had to cancel it due to the surge of the COVID cases. Unfortunately, without the pomp and circumstances that we would have had during this operation, with our heartfelt thanks on behalf of the city council, I want to thank every individual, every volunteer who has served helping make Mercer Island a better place. Those include the people who are on the boards of the commissions and people who just volunteer in any way they can, again, to help our city during this past year. So again, thank you for all of your help and your efforts. And I like to open up this time for any other city council member who might want to say a few words. Councilmember Andrell?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I was disappointed that we weren't able to do the volunteer appreciation event because I was looking forward to meeting a lot of the volunteers and thanking them in person and also to seeing some of my board and commission members where I'm the council liaison and have only seen them virtually for 18 months. So I just wanted to add my voice to yours to, to thank everyone volunteers for these positions. It's be hard to run the city without them. So thank you. We're very grateful.
Deputy Mayor Wyker?
Yeah, I just want to thank you for pulling this, Mayor Wong, and second Lisa's comments. I don't know what we would do without our volunteers. And I know a lot of folks have gone online with this pandemic. And I know we're doing the best we can with its restore and a lot of the other work that we're doing with being ready for emergencies and just can't thank our volunteers enough and our staff for shepherding all those resources. And more importantly, when we're going to need them more than ever and we finally get through this pandemic.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosenbaum?
Yeah, I'll just be real quick. I'll go with everyone else said. And I was disappointed when the, I got the calendar reminder for the, for the party and then remember it wasn't happening. But I think the spirit of volunteerism here is so strong. It's really admirable. And, you know, I just appreciate, you know, the effort that takes a village and appreciate everyone's support here.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Nees?
Yeah, same here. Thanks for pulling it, Mayor. To all the volunteers, I, I hope you understand and you can appreciate how much we value your contributions. The, the breadth of experience, knowledge, capability the Islanders have allows us to do things that we otherwise wouldn't be able to do. It's not just labor hours that people are contributing. It's experience. It's very specific valuable contributions to a number of operations of the city. So thank you to all the volunteers.
Thank you. Councilmember Jacobson?
As the council liaison of Parks and Rec Commission, I would certainly heartily endorse this volunteer appreciation month. That commission has done amazing yeoman work to fill in the blanks that staff could not have done with a pros plan, with Luther Burbank, work on Luther Burbank, work on Harvey Davis master plan, Parks Re, Parks and Rec restart. And they have made a material contribution to an aspect of this island, which is very important to people. That is to say the Parks Recreation Programs. So I couldn't be more grateful and I'm sure anybody who uses a park or engages in a rec program or is waiting to engage in one shares my views. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, certainly at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion authorizing the mayor to proclaim September 2021 as volunteer appreciation month in Mercer Island.
Next second.
It's been moved by, I think was Councilmember Andrell and seconded by Councilmember Reynolds. City clerk, please conduct the roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Jacobson?
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Wyker?
Aye.
Councilmember Andrell?
Aye.
Councilmember Nees?
Aye.
Mayor Wong?
Aye.
And Councilmember Rosenbaum?
Aye.
Thank you.
And thank you. Motion passes. We are now moving to our second item of regular business or item number seven on your agenda. This is AB 5940, the Development Code Amendment, ZTR 19 dash 003 signage pertaining to the ordinance number 21C dash 21. And this is our first reading. And I see his just popped up. So welcome, Community Planning and Development Director Jeff Thomas and also Senior Deputy Director Allison Bangor. Jeff and Allison, I think the council is well aware that we've had this need to update the city signage ordinance for the past several years, frankly. And given the pandemic, a number of work items on the work plan have given way to other pressing matters. However, the council appreciates the time and effort that you and other staff members have spent on providing us with an updated signage code language to review. While it would have been a heavy lift without the pandemic, it was certainly an extraordinary lift given the pandemic. And so again, thank you for all that work. Having said that, Jeff and Allison, do you have a presentation to make at this time?
Thanks, Mayor. Good evening, council and all those listening this evening and watching. For the record, Jeff Thomas interim director of community development planning. Allison Mayen, Deputy Directors on the screen, a couple other brief introductions to make. We've had some assistance from outside legal counsel, Daniel Kenny. He's joined us here on the call. He just popped up on the screen there. And Planning Commission Chair Dan Hubble isn't available, I believe, until 6:30, but he was planning on jumping on at 6:30 to provide a planning commission report to the council as well for this matter. So with that, I'm going to turn it right over to Allison and she's going to get things rolling for us. Thank you.
All right. Hopefully you can see my screen share there. I'm just going to start off PowerPoint. There we go. All right. Thanks for the introductions. And just to give a bit of an overview, the planning commission began work on a sign code amendment back in 2020. And that work was paused in March of last year. And then the staff brought this item back for the docket last fall. The city council did put forward a docketed item for the work plan with a, I would say surgical type of scope of work focused on bringing the city code into compliance with the Reed versus Gilbert case, which we'll talk a little more about in a minute. The planning commission took up this work in May and spent about two to three months doing a review and holding a public hearing. They finished that work at the end of July with unanimous recommendation to the council, which we're here to review tonight. I'm going to hand things over to Daniel Kenny at this point. He's going to give us a little brief overview of the Reed case. And then we'll move on to an overview of the code amendment itself. And like interim director Thomas said, Daniel Hubble will be joining us later in the evening to speak about the planning commission's recommendation and their rationale behind what was recommended. So if you have questions along those lines, please hold those for later in the meeting and we'll focus this first half more on the legal aspects. Well, Dan, Daniel's here and I know that he needs to move on to another city's council meeting at 7:00 PM. So we'll try to get through that part of it here in the first little while. All right, Daniel, I'll advance the slides. Just let me know when you would like the next slide.
That, that sounds great. And can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay. Always good to start there. Well, again, my name is Daniel Kenny. I'm with Ogden Murphy Wallace. I was asked to help out the team on the sign code review specifically on the legal issues related to the Reed versus Town of Gilbert case. There's a little bit more information in a memo that was provided to the planning commission that's in your packet. So if you wanted to ever review, review that or reference that, that's in your materials. So I'm just going to give you just kind of a quick, a quick summary right now of that case. You've probably all heard about it over the years. It's came out in 2015. It's a United States Supreme Court, court case that addressed the First Amendment issues for sign codes. So free speech issues. And that, this all result, revolved around the Gilbert, Arizona sign code, which had very specific limitations based on the type of sign that was being used. And so certain outdoor signs without a permit had a certain type of regulation. And there were categories, 23 other categories for different signs with different types of regulations. And so the case result revolves around the Good News Community Church putting up temporary signs each Saturday telling their church members, their community, where they're going to hold their next service on Sunday. They did not have a permanent location and so they would post those signs out in the community. And what happened is they just left the signs out just a little bit too long. That was one of the regulations for the, for that particular type of outdoor sign was duration. And that was different than the other sign types, the other 23 sign types. So for their sign type, the duration was expressed in the code. They left it out just a little bit too long and got cited for that. That's it. We're talking about the small town of city of Gilbert, Arizona, and a couple of signs for church that were just left out a little too long. And now we have a United States Supreme Court case that is telling us to revise our sign codes. And so that's kind of where this all came from. And so if we could go to the next slide. So again, this is the bridge, bridge version, but we get to what the Supreme Court held that the sign provisions in Gilbert, Arizona were content based on their face. And if it's content based on the fate, on its face, then it's subject to strict scrutiny, which is a level of review that a court would take in reviewing a challenge to those regulations. And that is a very high standard. It's rarely met and it's nearly always fatal. And so if you get yourself into a situation where you have a content-based regulation, you typically have to have very, very good reasons to support that. And so each of the sign code categories were defined based on the message that the sign conveyed. That's that content-based regulation. So depending on what the content of the sign was, there were different regulations, like we talked about the duration. And therefore they were subject to strict scrutiny. And they were not, Gilbert, Arizona was not able to identify those purposes to, to withstand strict scrutiny. And so when we were looking at our sign code, we need to look to this case to say, what, what's the rule from this case that we need to use when we're revising this? And so on the next slide is a very quick summary of, of the rule, the basic rule. And so the basic rule that I liked, how I like to think about it is if a code enforcement officer must read the content of a sign, so if they go out into the community because there's a complaint on a sign, if they have to read the content of the sign to determine which category in the code applies to those signs, then that is a content-based regulation on its face and is subject to strict scrutiny. And so what we're trying to do for non-commercial temporary signs, which is this general category of signs that is most applicable to the Reed case, it's your, for example, political signs. Political signs are one category of non-commercial temporary signs. That if we have a, a section of code that says political signs and then time restrictions, location restrictions or anything like that, we're saying you must read the sign to know that it's political and then apply certain regulations. Whereas if you read the sign and it was simply a temporary directional sign for a church, for example, it would have different regulations. And so that's the, that's what we're trying to work with and to pull out of codes. And so your code, the work that we did on the temporary signs was to get into compliance with this general rule. And I, I think I see a question. So Mayor, if.
Yes, Councilmember Reynolds?
Or just a general question first, would you prefer questions at the end or is it okay to ask as we go along?
Well, if it's pertinent to what is being discussed right now, go ahead and ask.
Okay, this one is, I'd just like to seek some clarification because I, we had some email dialogue about this before the meeting. The, the basic rule here is, I think is stated here is contradictory to what we were told elsewhere because there appear to be different rules for commercial signs and government signs. So is this statement really only applying, meant to apply to non-commercial, non-government signs? Because you certainly need to read a sign to know whether it's commercial or government?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So, so that's a great question. So we can dive into that. So in, in the ninth circuit where, where we are, there is case law that has retained the prior legal structure for commercial sign regulations. And so the Reed framework, the Reed versus Town of Gilbert framework does not apply to commercial signs. Largely the reason for that is because, is because personal expression, personal speech protected under the First Amendment is protected to a different degree than commercial speech. They are differentiated under the law as different types of speech. And so having a, a differentiation in the code between commercial and non-commercial regulations or sign regulations is okay, largely because of that distinction between the type of speech. And the same is true for government speech. Government speech is actually removed from both of those. It's, it's a totally different set. Nobody's First Amendment rights are infringed upon when the government speaks. It's not stepping on the toes of commercial or non-commercial. And so we do kind of create kind of three buckets. And so we do kind of create kind of three buckets, if you will, and that's consistent with case law in the Ninth Circuit and nationally. The differentiation between commercial and non-commercial is different in one of the other circuits. I'm trying to remember, I think it's the Second Circuit. But where we are, that's definitely the law of the land. And so what we do is we differentiate between the two of those and regulate from there.
Okay, very helpful, thank you. And just for avoidance of doubt, those are the only three buckets, is that correct? Commercial, government, and everything else?
Another great question, I mean, the way that I think about it, I think it's different than your question. I like to think of temporary versus permanent signs. I think those can be unique scenarios, if they're temporary and permanent and then also in the right of way and not in the right of way. But those are not differentiations in the way that you're talking about it right now in terms of kind of protected speech. But how you regulate does take into account whether it's temporary or permanent and whether it's in the right of way or not. But again, I think those are different differentiations than you're looking for right now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead and proceed.
So I was actually done, so it was great timing for that question. And so I'll pass it back over to Allison and I'm of course here to answer questions throughout.
Great, thanks a lot, Daniel.
Thank you. So I was just gonna move into kind of a high-level overview of the major changes that are included in the proposed code amendment. I think as we go along, I'm happy to take clarifying questions. And then after we conclude this overview, we can get more into the details. I know there's a matrix that I sent out to the City Council earlier today that answered a lot of questions from the council that came in over the weekend. If folks are interested, we can go through that in some more detail. Or if there's other questions, I'm happy to do that as well.
Allison, you have a question, we have a few questions right now.
That's fine.
There's a question from Councilmember Jacobson and then Councilmember Reese.
You're muted, Jake.
This is a question from Mr. Kenny. As I read, hear your remarks and read the materials, it appears to me that the new ordinance goes well beyond or deals with a whole lot of issues that have nothing to do with the Reed versus Gilbert case or the curative actions that have to be taken as mandated by that case, is that correct?
You know, I think I'd probably, you know, ask Allison to step in a little bit, but there are certainly some recommended changes that are not specific to the Reed case and Allison can speak to that.
I have a follow-up question, that would be, it would certainly be possible to have an ordinance that cures the Reed versus Gilbert without going into a whole lot of details, would it not?
I'm sorry, did you say and not go into other details?
Well, and not attempt to clarify other issues unrelated to Reed, those which, to which Reed versus Gilbert reaches.
I mean, yes, I think that you could identify and, you know, specifically address the Reed issues if you chose to.
Thank you. And Councilmember Reese?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a question for Allison, as you move through this presentation, you know, it became clear to me this morning when we touched on it that there are some components in the packet that are redlined, but they're actually not anything that was ever in the code. Specifically that section that's talking about 10 feet from a driveway, two feet from a curb, two feet from a sidewalk, that that was proposed language that maybe the commission struck.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, I'm wondering if you could just kind of speak to that. And also the language that was struck but not in here, about 100 feet from a business door and is replaced with 100 foot from a business and building entrance or something? Just so people can understand that this document is maybe not a red line against existing code as much as maybe a working document.
Yeah, I think we discovered this this morning when we were talking and I was aware of one of them after the packet went out. But yeah, I think what happened, because this was a working document that came through the Planning Commission and went through, you know, multiple rounds of revision. There is at least one place in the proposed code. It's on page, the top of page four on the copy I'm looking at, where there was a section of code, it speaks to minimum setback requirements for public and private facilities. And that was proposed by the staff and then later removed by the Planning Commission in their discussion. It proposed some specific setback distances from various things like driveways, curbs, sidewalks, et cetera. And the Planning Commission just chose to go a different direction and they didn't feel that those numeric standards were appropriate.
Allison, I was gonna, I'm just, I know that that was one issue that I had raised. I think it's sort of covered in the matrix that, and so is the other item that Councilmember Reese had raised, is that also something that is also perhaps addressed in the matrix or?
The second one is not in the matrix. It was relating to A-frame signs for businesses in Town Center. And I believe the existing code has language that roughly says the signs can be placed within 100 feet of the business. And the proposed code has more specific language. I don't have it right in front of me, but it's something about how the signs can be within 100 feet of the main entrance of the building where the business is located. And so it's attempting to bring some more specificity to how 100 feet would be measured. And I don't think that the original code language made it through the track changes process.
Maybe that's a question that needs to be asked of Mr. Hubble as far as what the thought process of the planning commission was.
Yeah, well, that one was recommended by staff because in reviewing sign applications, it had come up that it wasn't really clear how it's measured, do we measure from the edge of the property where the business is located or the building or the door, you know, how do we measure the distance in which that sign can be placed? And so staff had asked for a little more specificity there and then the Planning Commission came up with the method for how that should be measured.
Councilmember Reese, are you perhaps looking for maybe thumbs up, thumbs down on that particular change?
Well, I think when we step through these changes, if we get that far, that we should probably discuss the unintended consequence of the change. It's just very difficult to do when you're not looking at the existing code language and then the proposed new code language. If we could have both sections so we know from where we're coming from and going, it would be easier.
So Allison, maybe you need to put the proverbial pin issue back up. So we don't lose sight of it. Deputy Mayor Wyker?
Yeah, I just want to take us up a level and Allison, if you could speak to kind of the work that the Planning Commission did, I'm not sure Dan's gonna make it. So I just want to remind us all that the Planning Commission has run through this many times and in great detail with consultants all around. And so I presume they came up with a work product they're proud of and wouldn't need us to tinker with too extensively.
The Planning Commission held three meetings on this topic and did extensively discuss the recommendation that's coming forward today. Many of these meetings were several hours long, four to five hours long. And so we can safely say the Planning Commission spent at least 10 hours discussing and deliberating about the recommendations that have come forward, which they unanimously supported.
Mayor, if I may, so I think Allison still has a handful at least of slides to move through, is that correct, Allison? So maybe we could forge ahead with those and then if there's questions along the way, we could attempt to answer those and make it through the slide deck here.
Council, if you would just hold your questions and let Allison?
Yeah, so my intent here is to go through the higher level view of the major changes. And if you've got clarifying questions, you can ask that, but let's try to just get through this and then we can delve into the more detailed questions. So I think I may have already said this, but in addition to the Reed, coming into compliance with Reed, we have also provided, we have also asked the commission to provide recommendations on a few issues that have come up in plan review that the staff have noticed were either areas where clarification was needed or areas where the code didn't address an issue or type of sign that is commonly requested. There we go. Okay, so first I'll talk about the section of the code that refers to temporary signs. And this is probably where we've made the most extensive changes because as Daniel was saying, this is where the Reed case most heavily aligns with the changes that were required in our code. So one of the major changes is to shift to defining temporary signs based on the type and materials rather than the duration of placement. So rather than saying temporary signs are signs that can be up for up to 90 days, we're saying temporary signs are A-frames, banners, H-frame stakes. And, you know, they're made of materials that are meant to withstand the elements, but they're staked into the ground, so they're easily removable. And we've moved away from the time-based duration kind of regulations. And that has to do with some of the ways that the Reed case interacts with some existing state regulations. And it also has to do with just the enforcement. It's very difficult for staff to track and be able to observe and document how long a temporary sign has been up. And, you know, whether it's been moved or taken down and put back up, it's really impossible to enforce those kind of duration-based regulations. Secondly, it removes the provisions related to political signs as their content-based. And so political signs will now be regulated as a part of the regular temporary signs. They will not be a separate category of sign. It prohibits signs in parks explicitly, which was not in the code previously, except for as permitted in the Parks Code. And so the Parks Code provides a permitting option for signs in parks. And this is typically used for what the Parks folks call special event signs. So when there's installations related to an event or a monthly celebration or something like that, they're able to do it within the parks. An example would be this past summer, there was a big Juneteenth installation at Mercer Dale Park that included several large banners and a number of smaller signs. And that was an installation that was permitted through the Parks Department and allowed in the park.
Allison, before you go on, Councilmember Adderall?
Yeah, thank you. Are there any unpermitted allowances for signs in parks, in the Parks Code? That don't require a permit?
There are not, with the exception of government signs, those signs the city puts up or in the right-of-ways adjacent to parks, which are open for posting of temporary signs.
Okay, because it's not the park, right? Okay, thank you.
We've also added several provisions about the placement of temporary signs, clarifying that they can't obstruct sidewalks, sightlines, bike facilities, bus stops, and other things of that nature. It also prohibits the signs in medians, roundabouts, and traffic circles. And I know some of the questions we had clarifying this, it would prohibit signs in medians like on Island Crest Way or on 78th and Town Center. It also adds commercial office zone to the list of zones that allow temporary commercial signs. It was unclear why this zone was left off when the other commercial zones allowed this type of sign. And so we just wanted to make it, bring it into alignment with the Town Center Business and PBC zones, which already allowed this type of sign. So that's it for what I had for the temporary signs. For Town Center, we've added an allowance for signs to be placed along alleyways and through-block connections. So with the Town Center regulations that were adopted back in 2017, we created this requirement for through-block pedestrian passageways. And it was, it seemed that, you know, part of the intent of that was to create spaces along those passageways for retail. And it made sense to be, to allow businesses to put signs on those locations as well as on their street frontages. We also added an allowance for a secondary wall sign on the primary frontage of a business. The thought here was that we wanted to allow things like ATM machines or coffee stands to be identified by a separate additional small sign on the face of the building. This is something that is commonly done on banks, grocery stores, and other establishments like that. And just wanted to create an allowance for something that is typically already happening in many cases. We also wanted to clarify that the 25% limit on window signs applied to each tenant or business in the window area that faces the street. So window signs are allowed on 25% of the window area and we just wanted to make that clear that it was per business, not for the whole building. And we also had a big discussion with the Planning Commission about the lighted sign provisions. They had some interest in the Dark Skies Initiative and wanting to limit light pollution. And we moved to just having some more objective standards, seeking to limit the brightness of the lighting just to what is necessary to illuminate the signs and not to allow light to escape beyond the face of signs when they're lit from the exterior. Okay, moving on to signs outside the Town Center. There was a provision that helps to clarify how these signs should be measured for all sign types. And we added an allowance for lighted signs that was the same as the one in the Town Center provisions. And the thought from the Planning Commission there, there was kind of a variety of different regulations around lighting for signs outside of the Town Center. Some places did not allow lighted signs, some places only allowed signs with exterior lighting. And the Planning Commission didn't see a real distinction in the impacts to neighborhoods between exterior lighted signs and interior lighted signs. And they felt it was appropriate just to use the same rules that they developed for the Town Center for other types of signs outside the Town Center. We also added an allowance for signs at neighborhood entrances and driveway entrances for identification and navigation purposes. I'm sure folks are aware that it's pretty common in Mercer Island, especially along East and West Mercer Way, to have these signs at the top of long driveways that have either the names of the folks that live down there or the address of the homes because they're well down the driveway and difficult to find. But these types of signs were not actually allowed by our existing code. And so we wanted to create that allowance and put in place some size regulations and placement regulations for those signs. Finally, we added an allowance for the replacement of existing non-conforming signs. So for non-residential facilities that are located in residential areas like religious institutions, clubs, other organizations like that, many of them were built prior to the incorporation of the city and they've had these existing signs that have been there for many, many years. Oftentimes they're non-conforming based on size or setbacks or other things like that. And these facilities are not able to replace the sign at its current location and size. They would have to move the sign off and make it a different size or shape to comply with the regulations. And so this allowance would allow them to replace their sign with, in the same location and size of what it is now, but with a new sign rather than just repairing the old sign. Okay, the final thing is we added a definition of public art to the definition section to clarify the difference between public art such as murals and signs because public art is not regulated as a sign, it's totally separate beast. And wanted to have a definition to be clear about what's difference between like a mural on the side of a building in Town Center and a sign for a business in that building. And that is the end of my overview. And so at this point, Mayor, I'll turn it back to you and we could either just take general questions from the council or we could move through the matrix of questions that came in prior to the council meeting. I'll let you decide how you want to manage this.
Okay, thank you, Allison. So everybody should have received a copy of the matrix. Maybe you should stop sharing. In any event, and so I guess... In any event, and so I guess I think frankly, I looked at the matrix. I don't, I think I actually will go faster than what it looks like because I think a lot of this, a lot of the things that were asked were clarifying questions. But perhaps at this time, does anybody have any general questions for Allison or Daniel before we look into the matrix? Councilmember Jacobson and then Councilmember Reynolds.
It seems to me, well, my first question is, in 0206, the word director has been inserted or replaced code official. Where is director defined?
I'm not sure where it's defined in our code, but it does refer to the Community Planning and Development Director.
Well, it doesn't say that it does. So how would, why, why couldn't?
I believe, I believe that it's defined somewhere in development code. I do not know the exact reference off the top of my head.
Have you looked at the definitions section 16.010?
That includes a definition of code official, which refers to the code official as the Director of Community Planning and Development.
I don't believe you're correct in that. My next question is, isn't there an arguable conflict between B1 and a number of other things such as A5 under 020?
Could you be a little more specific? I am not tracking the exact sequence in each of those subsections.
06.020 says no signs in public parks. Does it, am I reading it correctly?
That's correct.
B1, or the same general section says the the non-commercial temporary signs are allowed in all zones. So I I argue that's a conflict. Who sorts that out?
Well, I think the the more specific provision would govern. And so when you're talking about prohibiting them in parks, that would apply to two parks. And then the provision in B1 would apply to other non-park areas.
Well, it says all zones.
It also says at the end, Jake, and I'm looking at your B, B1, it says, subject to the conditions set out in subsection A of this section, perhaps not most artfully drafted, but it looks like that language is would take care or at least address your issue.
Mr. Mayor, Daniel Kenny's back on the screen. I'd like to give.
Daniel, you want to respond?
You you actually just said what I was going to, Mayor, is that subsection A is the general provisions that are apply across the board. Subsection B1 specifically refers to the section A, subsection A, and says it's subject to those conditions. And so we we start with A and then we move on and see how other things may apply.
Councilmember Reynolds? Councilmember Craig Romu.
That's not my dog, fortunately. Couple of things, I have a number of concerns, but I won't go into those now. Just kind of talk about questions. The first one comes back to my question earlier about content again. The the exception for neighborhood signs seems like a very reasonable one on its face, but isn't that regulating based on content?
I think it's based on location because it talks about signs that would be placed at the entrances to neighborhoods or driveways.
So we could put other signs up there and it'd be okay, I guess?
Daniel, did you want to jump in here?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So so of the types of signs that do refer to something like that, this is one that you see often for safety reasons, to know the community that you're in, the building that you're at, the home that you're at, et cetera. And so of that very limited set of types of signs that could pass strict, strict scrutiny, that would be one that I think could work. And so that's generally what I like, what I see with that type of regulation.
And can you also just comment on this? What the motivation is for and the impact is of removing the definition of temporary signs as being sign as being not being time-based anymore? I'm finding that a little bit confusing. And for example, I would never do this, but would it allow a politician to keep up a running-for-office sign forever? And not, you know, long past the election season?
So so this is a great question, and the topic and the answer is confusing. So I'm going to do my best to to not be confusing because it is a little bit challenging. So what we have is we have the Reed case that talks about content neutrality and these these temporary non-commercial signs being treated the same no matter the content. We also have a case in the state of Washington that protects political speech and political signs. What's challenging about that is when you layer the two together, it doesn't really work, right? Because you can't specifically protect and have regulations for political signs, even though the Washington courts want that in a pre-Reed case, when you have this directive from from the Supreme Court to treat them all the same. So what we try to do is we try to create that bucket that will have all of these temporary non-commercial signs within that bucket. And then we treat that bucket in a way that that Washington court case doesn't get implicated. And so rather than treating political signs in one particular way because of the Washington case, we treat all temporary non-commercial signs in a way that doesn't conflict with it. I I appreciate that that's kind of confusing. And so I'm happy to dive into that further. But what that means is that we try to create restrictions on temporary non-commercial signs that don't step on the toes of either Reed or the Washington State case, Collier case. And one of the things that is very challenging is durational limits for signs. Because you can't do, so Collier basically said, pre-election is open game after the election can have reasonable limitations on it. And because we can't do that just for political, we have to create that bucket. And so what we try to do is we try to have restrictions that actually are enforceable. And for temporary signs, and this is kind of a related point to the to the time limits for temporary signs, it is extremely hard. I've talked to a lot, I've talked to a lot of code code enforcement officials. I presented at their conference and talked to them afterwards, knowing when a temporary sign was placed, particularly of those ones in the bucket that are political, because they all look the same. And so it's very challenging to know whether that particular sign was in that particular location for any duration of time because it could be a different sign. It looks the exact same. It could be 10 feet away. It could have been removed for three days that you didn't know it was removed. There's just a ton of challenges. And so having a set of regulations that applies broadly to the temporary non-commercial signs, beyond that is the focus of what we're trying to do.
So to to clarify then, or to pare it back if I may, I I understand the challenges of imposing a time limit on temporary signs. Now, that's very helpful. Am I correct that there is no time limit and I could put up a campaign sign forever? In this code?
Subject to the remaining restrictions, yes.
Okay, and that would similarly be true of a of a sign advertising a garage sale or or anything else that might be temporary in nature, but nothing would stop it from being up forever?
Yeah, I mean, you know, temporary signs are intended to be used for a limited duration. I know that doesn't speak to the actual duration, but that's the that's the intent. There's construction of the sign to make sure that they're maintained in a in a a manner that doesn't create a safety hazard. And you know what we're seeing? I I have seen this in the last few weeks. There are signs that are remaining for prior political candidates out there right now. And they're being treated as essentially, like you said, an ongoing political statement or campaign statement, however you want to put it. And they, the proponents of those signs are as adamant now that those signs applies, apply as they did prior to the last presidential election. So I think we're going to see more of that. I think there's going to be just constant political campaigns, if you want to call it that, or expressions.
That's that's most unfortunate, but we'll talk about that later when we get into the discussion. Thank you.
I guess I'm going to take a turn here. That is troubling. I mean, I guess I think we would all agree. I understand what you just said, Daniel, in terms of treating them the same, but what else can be done to encourage people to remove these temporary signs? Is there any other recourse that we have? Tools in the toolkit, because as Councilmember Reynolds points out, yeah, there doesn't, and as you've answered, there isn't anything to prevent, whether it's campaign yard signs or any other signs, from being there for months, years at a time. And I don't think people are going to really want to. That's not a great answer, saying that that's, that's, you know, live with that. So I'm just curious, whether or not you've seen in your discussions with your peers in the whole area, what else can be done?
And Daniel, may I just ask too, as you respond to this question, can you talk about why setting that time limit is so challenging? Like if if the time limit is two, two months and I pick up and move my sign five feet? I mean, you already talked about the challenges that code enforcement officials are having with duration, but also the other silliness that goes on. You know, if I just move my sign five feet every two months, it's perhaps compliant. I know you've had to tackle some of these things.
I mean, yeah, it's it's, I get where you're all coming from. I I unfortunately think about this way too much, so I I do get it. So yeah, I mean, there there are a lot of challenges. The I have seen some communities try to do something with a very simple permit approval or approval that really doesn't get staff time involved. So because you, you know, community that I know of has has the bandwidth to do temporary sign permit reviews or anything like that. So but having some sort of online submittal to say, I'm going to put this sign in this location, spits out a QR code or something like that, that you put on the sign that you can then go through with, you know, a device to read it, a cell phone or whatever, and it'll tell you the duration. And so you'd say, this sign is good for 90 days. And you get a QR code. And then you can go out there and do some enforcement using that based on that duration. But the the problem, though, is if you, if somebody uses up their 90 days in January because there's a some sort of primary or something like that that they want to get ready for, they're also going to have, and I'm just using political as an example, it would apply across the board. But if they want to use their 90 days there, then they don't have their 90 days available to them at the general election. So you really wouldn't have a provision that would say you can only place a sign for 90 days. It's just you can only place it for 90 days consecutively without getting the next QR code, the next short-term approval. And so by doing that, you're you you might create an enforcement mechanism that would be a tool in the toolbox. But again, I don't think what you're, you're not going to see the ability to shut down somebody from placing a sign. And 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 that's kind of what we're getting at is, you know, is there a tool or a mechanism to really limit the signs? And when you, when you think, again, going kind of back to the high level of what we're doing here, we don't care what's on those signs. So whether it's a, you know, a birthday party sign, a political sign, religious sign, you know, an ideological sign, as long as that sign itself, not the content, but the sign itself is compliant with the code, it's allowed to be out there. And so what we, what we don't want to do is say, well, we don't want an ideological sign related to a specific day that's in whatever month to be up six months later because it's stale at that point in our eyes. We we as the as the city don't look at the content. We just simply say, is it still safe? Is it located in a place that's, you know, permissible, et cetera, et cetera? With, you know, as a subsection A, all the different regulations for.
Okay, so, okay, I know Councilmember Reynolds, your hand is down. You know, I don't know, we can talk about this over and over again for ad nauseam, I think. I, Councilmember Reynolds, I was trying to bring this one, trying to land it a little bit. Go ahead.
Just a quick follow-up, I hope, which is, i- is there precedent? Are there other communities who have tried to solve this problem by just saying, we're not going to allow signs other than commercial or government signs? And and would that pass constitutional muster? Because I certainly, I I look at the campaign signs and I view them as perhaps arguably a necessary evil, but they're certainly ugly, and I don't want them there all the time, nor do I want garage sale signs or other signs up all the time. Can we avoid it by just banning them all?
Well, so I I appreciate you with your secondary question there at the beginning. No, I would not recommend that from a legal perspective. The both in Washington, political speech is protected, free speech is protected under federal law and state law in traditional public forums, those being things like the parking strip, sidewalks, et cetera. And so we don't have the ability to just do a blanket ban on what would otherwise be First Amendment-protected speech. And so what we're trying to do is create a set of regulations on that speech that are time, place, manner restrictions. Those are restrictions that are inner, subject to intermediate scrutiny. Again, if you just think about it, time, place, manner, you have to cross this hurdle to allow those regulations. Content-based, you have to cross this hurdle to get those regulations supported in court. So what we're trying to do is get as many time, place, manner restrictions that we can support that control and kind of put perimeter around these signs and how they will be placed without getting too too into the content-based.
Counsel, this again is the first reading. I'm just wondering whether or not there's any consensus to perhaps ask city manager, ask legal counsel to look at this issue a little bit more depth to see if there's any other what change, what recourse we might have. I mean, obviously, I think there's a concern raised about having these temporary signs out there for months at a time. It's your Councilmember Niece, I know you have your hand up, so I'm just looking to see if there's a.
So I'm I'm starting to understand the work plan because as Allison Allison said, the top page four, there were these restrictions where signs could and couldn't be. And that probably would have gone a long way to speaking to kind of this, if if you can kind of control where temporary signs can be placed, you may have a better control of the situation getting out, you know, really getting wild on you. I always told the Planning Commission didn't want this language in because it was too restrictive, but it was really the only restriction against this lack of having any time base. So did they understand by removing that text at the top of page four that they were really just opening the island up to year-round permanent signage, temporary signage?
Yes, they did. They definitely understood that. We talked about this issue extensively with them as well. When Commissioner Hubbell is able to join, I'm sure he can speak to some of the different opinions we heard from the commission. There was definitely a wide range of thoughts on these types of issues in terms of, you know, how to regulate, how to regulate time, place, and manner and what the the goal was with these kinds of restrictions. I think some commissioners felt we should have as many opportunities as possible for folks to express speech through signs. And other folks wanted to more severely restrict the places where these signs could be placed because of the visual clutter that they create in the island.
Okay, well, to your question, Mr. Mayor, I would support additional efforts to try and put some controls around this.
Is there a general thumbs up? I see, there's enough, this, I see four. So city manager and outside council on staff, if you can, we have other things that we want to take a look at. Issue, which is a significant one.
Mr. Mayor, I I guess I I need to ask for some clarification. I I understand that there's frustration. Are you asking us to put together a list of alternatives for you to consider?
I I think so. I I see the chair from the Planning Commission is here now. But before turning this over or at least asking Dan to comment, yeah, I think so. I think we're looking for options. I think you've heard fairly broadly. Yeah, I think so. I think we're looking for options. I think you've heard fairly broad consensus that people are concerned about the possibility of these temporary signs being out there for an extended period of time. We're, we're not trying to, um, change or distinguish on content. It's just the duration and how we can control that. So that's the concern. So whether or not it's reinserting these setbacks, if that's the way to go, maybe that's the way to go. But perhaps if Daniel can, uh, through his research can look at other means, um, I think we would want to see what those options are, so.
Okay, well. Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll bring that back. I, I, I think you're, you're realizing though, this, there's not a magic unicorn. So I, I think what we, in, in respect to schedules this evening, I know Daniel Kenny has to be at another council meeting at seven o'clock. Uh, and, uh, our planning chair just arrived. So we'll, we'll come back and we'll do a, a kind of a more thorough presentation on some alternatives that you can consider, recognizing that this one is particularly challenging, and, and I see the planning chairs here now, so I will, um, conclude my comments at that.
Thank you. Mr. Hubbell, I don't know if you caught wind of some of this recent discussion, um, but I want you to take this opportunity to sort of tell the council the thoughts of the planning commission during this process of, um, co-development.
Uh, yeah, uh, and my apologies, uh, Mr. Mayor and, uh, council. I had a, a medical appointment that I was unable to, to move this evening. So, uh, my apologies for, for my delay in arriving. Um, I don't know what you've, uh, covered and what the discussion has been, um, thus forth. So I, I, I can certainly give a dissertation, but it might be better if, if you have any questions directly. I don't want to rehash anything maybe that you've gone, uh, gone over already.
Well, it's, uh, I know time is running and perhaps the thing that, we were spending quite a bit of time on the issue of duration and the fact that the concerns raised by councilmembers, uh, about the possibility of temporary signs being out there for an extended period of time. And, um, noted that some of the language that was deleted, uh, including the minimum setbacks, was perhaps done with the knowledge that it might in fact result in these signs being out there for an extended period of time. I don't know if that's correct, but was that discussed in terms of, um, by the planning commissioners?
Yeah, we did actually have a pretty extensive conversation around, uh, duration, and I think we wrapped ourselves around the same axle. You probably are finding yourselves wrapped around, um, because it's not an easy, uh, it's not an easy problem to solve. Where I think we ultimately landed on this is, in the conversation of duration, uh, the question of enforcement came up as number one. So how do you actually go and enforce? Do you know who planted it? When was it planted? We would have to catalog and categorize if a sign was moved two feet down the street. Is that a new installation or not? Uh, and, and so we ran the, the drain on that for a long time. Ultimately, we concluded that, uh, especially in the case of, you know, and everyone likes to talk about political signs. But as we concluded, we, uh, came to the mind that there are, I think, some general, uh, guidelines that, if I recall, are in, uh, that are in here around, uh, placement. You mentioned the setbacks. I think part of why we struck that language and, uh, Allison, if you can recall, I believe part of the reason why we struck that language is we actually made the placement more restrictive in another place. Um, and the two working together would have basically made it near impossible. One caused one set of problems and one caused another set of problems. And so the compromise was having actually more restrictive placement overall and where you could put it. For example, not in medians, uh, close to intersections and those sorts of things. But if you look at some of our sidewalks, for example, in the town center, the setbacks mean that the signs would actually have to be on the sidewalk and couldn't, wouldn't be, uh, in a place that actually would have been more appropriate for the sign to be. So, um, Allison, uh, correct me if I've, I've missed anything, but, but that is my recollection of that half of it.
I recall that one of the commissioners pointed out that the recommendation had a two-foot setback from the curb and a two-foot setback from sidewalks. And so if you only had a four-foot wide planting strip, you could not place a sign there. Um, and they felt that might be overly restrictive and would really reduce the amount of areas where signs could be placed around the island. Um, and we did have right above that section, um, under a seven, eight, nine, 10, there's a bunch of other regulations that you referred to about the places where they're prohibited, including the, the sightline triangles of intersections, roundabouts, medians. And then there's a whole section about bike, they can't impede bike facilities, bus stops, things like that. So there were other regulations that are not numeric, but got to that same sort of intent of trying to address some safety concerns and also reduce, um, the places where you could put signs.
Councilmember Neese.
Yeah, uh, first, Commissioner, thank you for your work on this. Obviously, it's a heavy lift and we appreciate the, the many hours that went into it. I wanted to ask you if you guys talked at all about a permit system, any sort of permit that could have. Uh, I know the city doesn't want to get into the business of trying to regulate permits on these, but if, if there was a way to do it, would that not kind of answer these questions?
I believe we brought it up in so much as it was, uh, pretty quickly dismissed, I think on the grounds that you just mentioned. If you think about the number of signs that we do have around the island, if you think about real estate signs and garage sale signs and all of the other things, it was a question of how much of an imposition do we want the code to be on people who are actually just trying to participate in the community with the things that, um, they might do on a weekend, with the recognition that 99.9% of the people that do use temporary signs on the island do so in a, uh, very respectful way to their neighbors and to others. And so, uh, we sort of, I think the conversation ended on, let's not try to solve a problem that doesn't exist. And, um, even as it, uh, attaches to political signs, and we do see a number of them around the island, which is where most of the conversation landed. For the most part, uh, we haven't seen that there has been a problem that would have necessitated permitting. And so we spoke about it briefly enough to move past it.
Yeah, and so my thought on it, and obviously I'm reading the tea leaves from my councilmembers, but you know, there's concerns that we may create a problem with the new sign code, because we are taking things out that used to say, remove these 48 hours after election and things like that. You know, if you created a permit system for anyone wanting to place more than five signs, you would remove a huge portion of what you just kind of said would be problematic and implement, all the realtors are limited to four. You know, i- if you had some smart threshold, you could probably reduce your volume by 90%. You know, was it dismissed just because there wasn't a lot of discussion about how to implement it in a way that creates the least amount of work, but the most amount of protection?
Uh, I, I'll, I'll get back to the comment that, uh, it was mostly not, uh, brought up in that we didn't feel that it was a problem that needed to be solved. And I do get that you're, uh, projecting, um, you know, the potential of introducing, uh, poor behavior with some of the language being, um, taken out, uh, we, we didn't take that, um, that light.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner.
So, so again, maybe that thing is a, this permit may be, per, requiring a permit may be an option that should be taken a look at by Daniel and the staff, I guess. That's just another option. Jeff Thomas, I, you've come on the screen, so did you want to weigh in?
Just briefly to the, the idea of a permit program for this type of signage. Um, I've had those discussions with, uh, multiple other city councils before, and it's, y- y- you know, it becomes a program that needs to be funded. It doesn't pay for itself. Often it doesn't bring in anything, uh, because it's a, it's a program that doesn't charge anything. So, I mean, that, that's a big, that would, that would be a significant discussion to have with the city council, and certainly one that we would want to. But, but i- if at council's direction, put some significant, uh, preparation into and, and have that dialogue with you. So it's, um, it's not free. Let me, let me leave you with that thought, so.
Okay, thank you. And Daniel Kenny, you want to, before we go to Councilmember Jacobson, do you want to weigh in?
Yeah, just, just real quick, I just wanted to point out that the current sign code actually o- only really speaks to the duration for, for political signs and saying that i- it's in, um, A6E for, for reference, but it basically just says, a temporary sign other than a political sign may only be erected for a maximum of 90 days during a 365-day period. This is your current code, not the draft, current code. So, um, a- again, in speaking to, you know, i- is this an issue that the city is facing? Um, or are you trying to fix something that's not present? You know, for, from a political science standpoint, you don't, you don't have that out there right now as a regulation. And so I don't think you're deviating from status quo, um, in the way that maybe it feels like you are, given that you don't have that in there. So I just wanted to kind of identify that.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Jacobson?
This goes in a somewhat different direction, and I've looked through here and I have not seen language that would, uh, to the effect that, uh, the person or entity uh, who was the beneficiary of the sign is responsible for its removal. And that might be an encouragement to, uh, people to remove, remove temporary signs. And I know there have been times when that's been troublesome, my cop, my constituents' report. It was okay to have these things during the campaign, and there certainly is a provision, you can require somebody to remove it. It's often, uh, not always easy to find the person who put up, you know, Smith for city council signs or get a hold of Smith. So I think that would, that would be something that would speak to our constituencies, um, in conjunction with its A. It's 12, uh, 020, uh, A12, uh, A.
Doesn't that get to the threshold limit that we can't address?
Well, it, it simply says that somebody is responsible for removing. It doesn't say when.
Daniel?
I, I'm, I'm trying to find, uh, wh- the, where the reference is here, sorry. You, you said A12A, which is the signs in the right of way, signs may be placed adjacent to single family only with permission of the property owner?
Right. Uh, my point is, it, when it comes time for removal, it, it, the, or the party that places a sign is, uh, responsible for removal or the beneficiary of it. So if Joe's Shell station puts up a sign, if the issue ever comes about removal, that Joe Shell has to get that thing removed, or, or Joe Smith or city council or something like that. And that, that I think would respond to the constituents I've heard who, uh, who say it's tolerable during election periods of time, but after that, you know, I mean, the stuff looks like garbage and a lot of people won't take their signs.
And, um, you know, it's getting, the hour is getting late, and there's still a lot to go through on this, these proposed, uh, changes. And I'm going to suggest that maybe Allison, you, you lead us through the matrix. And I did a first blush after a quick look, and there's a lot of no action, as far as I can tell. There's a lot of the comments from Councilmember Reynolds and myself, uh, were clarifying questions which staff has answered. So I don't think it's going to take us that long, but I've been wrong before. But if people are willing to do that, let's proceed. And, um, planning chair, Mr. Hubbell, thank you for, for being here, and please, uh, stay with us if you have time. You might, uh, be able to weigh in or at least elucidate on some of these proposed changes that are in the matrix. I don't know if you have a copy of that, but, um, I think it'll be on the screen, so. Why don't we go ahead, proceed? Uh, go ahead, Allison.
All right, let me share my screen here again. I guess I should make this a little bit bigger, probably. All right, are you able to see that?
Yes.
All right, so this is kind of a compilation of quite a few questions. I think there's about 35 that came in from Mayor Wong and Councilmember Reynolds over the weekend. I've organized them in order by code section, so, um, hopefully you can follow along in your copy of the code to get a little more context as needed. Um, the first one here refers to the temporary sign section under subsection A3. And the question was about, um, impeding sightlines. And I referred to the subsection in A9 that includes language about the clear view sight triangle of intersections and prohibits temporary signs in those places. So that is intended to keep signs out of those sightline triangle, um, right around, that basically just the area around an intersection.
Yeah, and, and instead of going through these in such great detail, I mean, I, there's a number of them, like for instance, like number one, to me, it's a no action. It's basically.
Correct.
You guys clarified a question that I had, so.
So would you like me to just go through the ones that had a recommended, um, change code revision?
You know, for instance, number two, maybe we should ask Councilmember Reynolds, are you satisfied with the response? Is that, again, simply a clarifying question you've had?
If, if you can just confirm bicycle facilities, when I read that the first time, I thought it meant like bike racks, for example. Would it include bike paths and sidewalks? Would those be considered bicycle facility?
Yeah, the intent there was to include things like bike lanes, bike paths, bike racks, other kinds of bike parking, all of, all of those facilities that are used by bicycle riders.
Okay, I'm okay then.
Uh, Mayor, if I might, uh, I had, I, I had a similar question, number one, that I, I needed certification on. Allison, when we talked this morning, we talked about a sight triangle. Can you explain to the council what that is and what skills are necessary to identify a specific intersection sight triangle?
Yeah, this term that is used here, this clear view sight triangle, I believe is a engineering term. Um, when our, our civil engineering team looks at development plans, that's what they're looking for to make sure that there's clear views, like say, in a turning action coming out of a driveway. And, um, I, I believe it's actually calculated specific to the context of the intersection, depending on, you know, the angle of the roadways and whether there's hills and things like that. Um, and it's just making sure that you've got adequate sight distance to make a safe turn.
So it's there, it's clear that no layperson will ever determine this, uh, with any sort of, uh, certainty. But yeah, we're trying to have them determine it because they're placing their signs. Is, did, maybe this is a question for the commissioner, but did you guys discuss this and think of any other way? Like, you know, you routinely see signs, no parking within 30 feet of an intersection, could we have just picked 30 feet?
Your microphone's not on, Dan.
There it is, I gotta push the button. Yeah, if, if that was a question for me, uh, Councilmember Neese, uh, I would say that we did talk about it, and I think to the context that, um, Allison sort of said that every intersection really does have unique circumstances. Quite frankly, we don't have, the two things that we felt were going against us as one is that we are, as an enforcement body, as a city, typically a complaint-based enforcement mechanism. So that was number one, and then number two was, uh, given the context that every intersection in the city is very different, given the curvatures and the driveways. Frankly, we, we could not think of another way other than using the standard language that we use elsewhere in our code. But I agree with you that it is, it would be difficult for anybody to understand what that means.
Yeah, so just to. Yeah, so just to put this one to bed, it's clear that we're creating a reference that the general public and layperson will not be able to adhere to, and that we're gonna rely on complaints, and then an engineer to come out determine a sightline, or maybe they predetermined sightlines for these things, so that the sign could be removed. Like, that's the approach that we're choosing to take here.
Or, or is it possible to actually insert some, or simplistic definition for this, uh, clear view sight triangle?
Well, that's a great point. Maybe we just move on from there and see what comes back at the second reading.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, again, Allison, you can just note that, maybe think in terms of a definition. Okay. All right, um. I'm going back and looking at this. Uh, number three, that, I'm fine. That, that's, uh, again, a clarifying my question.
I'm, I don't like the answer to number four, but I accept it and understand it.
Well, number four, I think it will, will come back to, I mean, that was, we spent a lot
Talked about that one.
Duration, yeah. Um. Number five, thank you for clarifying, um, number one. Uh, I, again, I, Mr. Hubbell, you're there, so I guess talk to me about this, uh, increasing this square footage, uh, sign, I guess from six feet to nine feet.
Yes, just trying to click my button. We were, uh, provided the, um, if you're thinking about sandwich board signs in front of our businesses in the town center with lunch menus and those sorts of things. Um, nine square feet is the size, uh, would be the surface area of both sides of that sign. So that was the, the, where that metric came from. So if you look at an A-frame, uh, sort of sandwich board type of sign that you would typically see in the downtown, uh, area, uh, that was the, the number that we were told is the size that would encompass the, the calculation of the sum of both sides.
Okay. All right.
And again, not being able to distinguish between a restaurant sign and another sign, we have to pick a number.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Andrell.
Thanks. Yeah, so I'm not understanding, then, is this sign, it is gonna be bigger though than what's permitted now? I mean, it's going up from six to nine.
Yes.
So, so you're saying that there are all the A-frame signs that are in town right now are already non-compliant? And this is just, we're changing the code to make the non-compliant signs compliant?
I believe that was a concern that was raised by one of the commissioners. She had looked online at what is commercially available, you know, kind of pre-made A-frame sandwich board signs and what size those were, and she felt that the majority of those that were easily available exceeded six square feet. And so she didn't wanna create a burdensome requirement where people would have to have custom-made signs.
Okay. And per sign face, I mean, what, what does that actually mean? Is, doesn't that mean each side? Or?
Yes, it's, it's nine feet per, like if you have a two-sided A-frame, it would be nine feet on each side.
Wow, that seems big.
That was, it's, it's three by three in, in, in practical terms.
Right, but I mean, that they're taking up space on the sidewalk, and so I have real concerns with increasing the space to, to that. Particularly with the sidewalks that we have that are often, um, you know, in some cases narrow and in some cases buckled up by tree roots and in, um, yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I just have to go on record saying I'm not in love with this change, but, um, have we talked to the business community about this? Do, do they, are they, is there a demand for this?
We did not specifically reach out to businesses as a part of this amendment process, though one of our commissioners is a business owner in the town center, and he was able to provide some commentary on these types of issues.
Okay, yeah, I, all right, uh, maybe I need to save my comments for a little bit later, but it, it does seem like input from businesses for what would be helpful to them, um, would be valuable. Some businesses, and I love the A-frames, other businesses may be feeling like their, their neighbors' A-frames are impeding access to their doorways. I don't know, I mean, it's, it's because this is all new and we don't have input, um, I'm feeling a little bit like I'm make, we're making changes that I'm, I'm not sure are warranted.
Allison, are, are you aware of the?
May I interrupt? Um, just because of our outside council, Daniel Kenny's availability. Um, it's going to be seven o'clock soon, so if any of the council has any last quick questions to Daniel, um, and if not, if we could excuse him, so he can attend the other council meeting that he has scheduled.
Yeah, can I ask Daniel a quick question? Uh, Dan, Daniel, for the, for the process of issuing a permit, can you regulate that somebody issue their own permit by writing on, let's say, a sticker or, um, a portion of their sign? The applicable information that they, you know, who they are, when they place the sign, when they plan on removing the sign? Like, is that allowable? To create a permit process where there is no city staff, it's kind of a self-issued permit?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I, I probably wouldn't describe it or think of it as a permit process, more of a self-certification or something like that. I think when you add all of that information, um, even the most well-intentioned folks probably won't do it. Um, but there, I, I think we can, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll work with staff to come up with some ideas that kind of head that direction, that we can kind of vet a little bit and bring back to you, um, with some, some way, whether it's an auto-generated number or QR code or something. That, that's possible, but I, I think that the, the thing to be mindful of, and, and I know I've said it, so I won't belabor the point, but you know, enforcement, um, is time and money, it's resources on the city, and so even if you have that information, you have to have regular enforcement that is put into the community uh, to look into that. But, but we'll build on that, and of course, uh, first of all, thank you for your, um, kindness and letting me attend and then, and then leave now. I do apologize for that. It was a pre-existing commitment that I have here at seven um, for another council meeting. So I, but again, I do apologize, you're having a very robust conversation. Um, I will be working with Allison, um, following this, um, and, and of course with Bo, and so if you do have any follow-on questions that I can contribute to, they'll take those questions down and we'll make sure to get you full and complete answers, so that you have that available to you well in advance of your next meeting. And so, um, I, I appreciate you letting me attend tonight, and I do apologize for having to leave.
Thanks a lot, Daniel. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel.
Councilmember, Councilmember Reynolds. You're on mute.
Thank you. I actually had a, one of my questions was for Daniel, uh, but maybe I'll catch Bo on that one later, but I just, uh, first, I just wanna get a Councilmember Andrell's last comment about being concerned about the sandwich boards blocking the sidewalks. Isn't that covered by section A four that says the sign must not obstruct the sidewalks? Am I missing anything, Allison?
It does address that concern.
Okay, thank you. But my, my, my question for Bo, if I can quickly sneak it in, is, um, recognizing that, uh, Daniel said we can't ban non-commercial, non-government signs, and recognizing it might be difficult to enforce, could we impose a, a fee of a dollar per week per sign to have a sign up? Or something similar?
You'd have to have a reasonable basis while you're imposing the fee, not just because you wanna make money out of it, but if it's a fee is related to a permit that you're requiring, and, and, and it justifies the work that the government entity has to uh, conduct in order to issue that permit, then yes, but not just a blank blanket fee. That would not be permissible.
So, so a fee for the express purpose of limiting the number of signs would, would not be acceptable, I take it?
That would not be acceptable.
Okay, thank you.
Again, uh, just, Bo, perhaps as you, uh, take a look at that issue that, uh, Councilmember Reynolds just raised. It'd be helpful if people wanna go that route, what, what needs to be, what do we need to do to justify the issuance of a fee? Okay.
Absolutely.
Align why we can't do it, I'd be curious, under what circumstances could you do it? Okay, so, anyway. All right, so let's go, continue on, uh, Allison, I think we're at number, uh, we're still at number five, I guess. No, I'm sorry, number six now. Yeah, this, okay, this is, this is my question, I guess, just, just an initial thumbs up, thumbs down. I raised the issue about whether or not these signs should, uh, we should require that these signs be made with recyclable materials or compostable materials. Um, the answer is, I guess we can do that, but obviously there are issues, so I don't know where the council is on this issue, whether or not there's any strong desire to require, uh, Councilmember Reynolds.
I, I just confess, I don't know if, if it's possible to make durable signs that are recyclable or compostable. If it is, I'm wholly in support of that, but I don't wanna legislate something that can't be done.
Okay, Councilmember, I've definitely, Mayor Wyker.
Yeah, and I'm gonna go back to the enforcement costing time and money that we don't necessarily have, so I'm not in favor of this until we know if it's practical.
Uh, anybody else wanna weigh in? Otherwise, it sounds like it's, it's dying on the vine. Um, okay, so let's move on then.
Okay.
Number seven.
Number seven, this was Councilmember Reynolds.
I, I'm comfortable with their recommendation if they feel that it addresses the concern.
I think that just clarifies, I mean, it, it's not strictly necessary, but it's a simple revision that would make it very clear.
Thank you.
Unless anybody has any objections, that change will be incorporated. Uh, number eight, uh, another clarifying, uh, response, so thank you. Number nine. Allison, I think you've clarified that. I mean, I guess, in my opinion, it's still unclear to me what interference necessarily would mean, but it sounds like you guys are interpreting it a certain way, so I'm gonna go with that in terms of sort of batteries or the parameters that you guys put on that.
Okay.
Ten has been addressed, we can skip that.
Okay. Uh, number eleven. Uh, again, it's been addressed, so thank you. So as long as, uh, we let the public know how this is, uh, in complaints, how they need to be filed. Okay, number twelve, I think I looked at it, I'm fine with your responses.
Okay.
I don't think there's any action there.
Thirteen.
Again, we've talked about the A-frames. So this is, um, is this the one that, uh, Councilmember Nice raised regarding the hundred foot?
It's sort of related, um.
So, yeah.
I think the section he was talking about might be in the town center code, but, um, they're both related to A-frame signs. This section talks about how commercial temporary signs, specifically A-frames, are only allowed on property that's owned or controlled by a licensed business.
Oh yeah, but this one, yeah, this one does have the mind, it shall be located within a hundred feet of the primary street level entrance of the building in which the business displaying the sign is located. So this is the one that Councilmember Nice.
Okay, thanks for clarifying.
And so can I, can I ask the commissioner the question now that we got here to this point? Um, so Commissioner, it, the, the code was changed from a hundred feet from the business entrance, I understand, but I don't have the citation because it's not in our packet, to a hundred feet from the main entry of the building. I understand the staff is trying to solve the problem of measurability, having a defined place to measure from. But what you've effectively done, uh, you, what, what this passage would do is allow any business on any floor of any building to now place an A-frame sign within a hundred feet of the entrance of that building. So if you have a building like the Globe Building or, uh, or it's, it's gotta be a building in town center, but you have the one office high-rise at the Farmers, e- every business on any floor would now be able to place an A-frame sign a hundred feet from the ground floor entrance saying CPA, doctor, dentist, lawyer, you know, you could see all sorts of signs that wouldn't necessarily be there with this change. Was that intended or unintended?
Can I just clarify? I don't think, I think that is the case currently. I don't think this changes who can post the signs. It simply changes how we measure it. And now that I'm looking at the provision on my screen, which I wasn't when we spoke earlier, Councilmember Nice, um, I think what's here in track changes is accurate. The, the new language that was added did not replace anything else. Previously, this section read, shall be located within one hundred feet of the business displaying the sign. And so all that was added was within one hundred feet of the primary street level entrance of the building, in which
And so if, if the business was on the fifth floor, on the opposite side of the main entrance, it probably was ineligible, but now is eligible. That's, that's
I think it was just unclear before how we were supposed to measure what it meant a hundred feet from the business. Was it from the building, the property, the door, the actual entrance to that office?
I understand your point. I just wanna make sure that we understand we are creating a new class of people eligible to put signs out that weren't before. Uh, I can clearly say
Staff perspective, I think we would have allowed those signs before, so I don't think it's a change.
But the code didn't, and that's what we're doing here, is updating the code. Uh, it's not what the staff would or wouldn't do, it's what the code allows. Uh, by making this change, we are creating, creating something that does not exist.
Yeah, I think that's correct. I mean, I think with the change in, in the code language, I think it does change things. Um, the question is whether that's good or bad, so.
Uh, yeah, I mean, just, since the, the question was posed to me, I think originally, and, and I would say, uh, Councilmember Nice, um, we were not thinking of it in the terms that you were. I think the code being silent on where it was being measured from would have led to at least our interpretation of it, which is why we wanted to draw clarity. Uh, and I do believe that, like, you're raising a good point around what that might look like when you're more specific about it. I think if someone were to challenge it, when we looked at the code, it was silent, therefore it most likely would have been allowed. That's typically what happens when the silent, uh, when the code is silent on something like this. And so, um, we were just trying to bring some clarity to that. Um, so if, if you've got a different way of, of addressing that, I think you could do that. We did not, um, see it as a uh, change in opening something up. It was strictly as, uh, as Allison indicated, it our conversation related to just creating clarity to how it was measured with the uh, view that the current code would have in its current form allowed it to happen.
Right, well, I'm sure when it comes back for second reading, staff will apply some sort of, uh, options to this.
So, i- when it does come up for second reading, are you envisioning, uh, Councilmember Nice, are you envisioning a different language or optional language for us to take a look at, or do we need to get a kind of a thumbs up right now from the council, whether or not they like the change that's being proposed, or?
I think staff could use some guidance on, you know, if, if a different language is desired, what direction that should take.
Well, let, let's just see if there's enough consensus with the proposed language here. If people are somewhat happy with it, let's just do a thumbs up. I can't see everybody's thumbs, so I mean, hopefully tab or somebody can. So who's, um, who would be in favor with the language proposed by staff and by the planning commission? Who's okay with that language?
We, we'd need to stop sharing the screen to see everyone.
Okay, again. I, I'm hoping everybody knows what section we're talking about, but, uh, I'm not gonna assume that's the case. Who's okay with what is proposed right now? Okay, I only see three. Okay, I only see three. Dave, I can't see your thumb or your. No.
But it's not up. It's not up. I'd like to see, I'd like to see some more options.
Okay, so, okay, that's fine. So let's see if, Allison, if you can come back, alright.
So can we be clear about the problem we're trying to solve with this? It's not having a clutter of signs outside of one building with multiple businesses upstairs? That's the specific issue we're concerned that might occur, should we're not more careful in the code language?
Yes, effectively, we're, we're trying not to create a problem that doesn't currently exist, which is any, any.
Right, we're trying to avoid cluttered signs.
So, yes, if you could just say a hundred foot from the business and then find a way to define where the business is, then you wouldn't create this problem. But by doing the main entrance, you create the problem. I don't mean specifically you, this language.
Right, no, no, I get it. And, and so the problem is, and we're going to have a race to get signs for a problem we don't currently have. So as you try to figure out the language, good luck with that. Thank you.
Yeah, I, thank you.
So are we seeking to limit which businesses are eligible for A-frames or?
I think that's the smartest choice, is we should really know by talking to the merchants who, who really needs an A-frame and it does some good, and try and make, deliver that to them. Not a dentist or lawyer on the fifth floor.
And not regulate the requirements, so we can't determine signage based on content.
Yeah, I mean, I really think that talking to the merchants in town center is the key to this, you know, we, we need to engage them.
Most notably, the ones in the tall buildings.
Okay, Councilmember.
Yeah, thanks. I was just going to comment that, you know, this provision kind of coupled with my concerns about the larger size of the A-frames and even given Councilmember Reynolds' notation that, you know, you're not allowed to obstruct the sidewalk, but what, you know, one, at what point? I mean, if there are three signs and they're not obstructing the sidewalk, and the fourth one comes in and they're all gigantic. And, and then all of a sudden, they're all obstructing the sidewalk. I mean, how are we going to decide on this? It, it just seems like the larger signs and the allowance that anybody in the building can put one up is going to, is going to create a congestion problem on the sidewalk or near the entrance. And that's just something I wouldn't want to see or encourage.
Councilmember Andal, may I ask then what the suggestion is?
Well, I think, I think what Saleem said earlier, which is, you know, measure it from a distance from the business. If, if the business is on the fifth floor, then maybe they need to, you know, rely on the, the directory to, to direct people into their location as opposed to an A-frame sign. I, I don't know. Again, you know, let's see what our business community needs and wants, and then let's try to figure it out. To me, I would say a distance limitation from the business itself and also a consideration of the appropriate size of an A-frame sign, since it is. They are all kind of by definition obstructing the sidewalk. And I get that they're useful, I don't want to prohibit them, but we need to find some sort of a balance.
Thank you for that clarification.
Okay, alright, so staff will come back. With hopefully some additional language for us to take a look at. So I was trying to move, move this along, so now we're at, I think we're at number fourteen, Allison.
Yeah, let me reshare my screen.
Okay, I think we're okay, I'm okay. Clarifying. Number fifteen. Since you're suggesting you're okay with my recommendation, I'm okay, but I guess it's up to the council. Somebody has a major problem, say something. Why don't we keep on going? I think these are more kind of drafting issues or suggestions. Same thing with sixteen and seventeen.
These are all simple corrections in the draft.
Yeah, yeah. Councilmember Reynolds, you had number eighteen.
Yeah, given the answer to that one, it's, it seems to me that for some buildings, we're effectively saying signs on second floor offices can't be visible from the street level because there would be railings that would block any sign that was below the windowsill. And that strikes me as unnecessarily restrictive, and certainly has nothing to do with Reed versus Gilbert, also, I'll note.
Well, I, I think this requirement was already there, that all signs must be below the second story.
Okay, so that, that's a fair point. This is not a new problem, but it is a problem.
Okay. Nineteen, again, just minor change. Twenty, again, looked at it, thank you for the clarifications. No, I don't see any action that needs to be done. Councilmember Reynolds, twenty-one.
And on this one, I don't recall if this was related to new code or not. I think it might have been X code, but it was just noting that we have a severe problem with parking in town center, and a big part of the problem is we don't know where public parking is, or most people don't. And I've seen other communities that have attractive parking signs that are up in the air where they're more visible. And I think any code that restricts those to be within only three feet off the ground or thirty-six inches, like, yeah, that's correct, it's unnecessarily restrictive.
Anybody else have any comments or response?
Is there interest from the council to make a change here? Looks like yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Nineteen, again, just a type of thing for that. Twenty, again, thank you for the clarification, so I'm fine with the explanation from staff. Twenty-one, Councilmember Reynolds.
We just, we just talked about twenty-one.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
We're on twenty-two.
I'm, I'm sorry.
We can talk about it again if you like.
Yeah, and they come out with a different response, okay. Okay, twenty, twenty-two is fine. Twenty-three, Councilmember Reynolds and I had the same question regarding phone numbers, so.
Again, this was in the existing code, like, code language, so I don't know what the intent was with prohibiting phone numbers. Perhaps it was an aesthetic issue, but I, I just don't know why that's there. If there's interest from the council in removing it, you could suggest that.
And, and I, I think we need to have a philosophical discussion about whether we want to do more to the code than just comply with Reed versus Gilbert, to come back to Councilmember Jacobson's point. If we're going to make a broader discussion, I think that's one that's worthy of considering removing, but maybe we don't want to do that. Maybe we want to leave an X code alone unless it's required.
I don't think it's, well, I, I, I can't answer whether or not it's required or not. I suppose, I know you have a broader question, Councilmember Reynolds, but as to this particular question regarding phone numbers, do people care? Do you want people to be able to include phone numbers or not? So all, all those who are willing to allow people to insert phone numbers if they want, thumbs up. Stop sharing, I guess, so we can see.
There you go.
I think there's enough, I, I don't know, I can't.
Mr. Mayor.
And Councilmember Rosamau.
Yeah, can I, can I ask a, a sort of larger question around this? Where would websites or social media handles, would that fall under the same exclusion of the code here? Or is that not, my guess is the code might have been written before that was a thing. So it's just maybe for the next reading, we want to consider that as well.
Yeah, I suspect this is a carryover from a while ago, and probably things like social media handles didn't exist.
Allison, the, the mayor was trying to get a thumbs up, so we need you to stop screen sharing.
The only issue on this one was phone numbers allowed or not. So those who are willing to allow phone numbers, thumbs up, one, two. Okay, so the answer is yes.
But I, I would just want to say, I, I think phone numbers, fine, but I'm still hung up on the bigger question of how many changes do we want to make to the code right now? Just to comply with Reed versus Gilbert and then do everything else in a phase two? Or, you know, Reed versus Gilbert plus all the Christmas tree ornaments that everybody wants to see?
That is a question that's probably for the next council, but yes, I think. A number of folks have raised that, whether or not there needs to be a phase two, probably does need to be a phase two. But I think what we have in hand here are some specific recommendations from the planning commission, which I think we can act on. And so, well, we'll go ahead and plow through. Now, Councilmember Rosamau brings up a point regarding website addresses. I don't know if that's something that Allison, you're going to address that, or?
I think if we, it looks like we have a majority of council members that want to remove the phone number provision. And I, that would also allow other types of identifying information to be on the sign.
Okay.
I, I would argue that, I, I would argue that the others are allowed already because they're not.
Okay, alright. Alright, twenty-four. Again, unless somebody has any objections, I'm, I'm fine with what the staff is doing. Twenty-five, this is the one that the planning commission did not reach an agreement on. And this is one that they have asked us to take a look at. That is, again, to what extent do we give the design commission flexibility in waiving the sign code? So this is, this is clearly a policy discussion. And I did ask some questions, you can see the answers. Councilmember Jacobson.
Well, I don't think, I don't like that the unaccountable people should be making these kinds of decisions. It should need to be, it should need to be the staff or the council. And the staff, I think, is particularly well-suited to be doing this. And if the staff refused to grant their answers or, or waive provisions, or the staff's actions on these things consequences are to be inconsistent with what we view as public policy, then, then we can correct that. But the design commission doesn't meet very often, I mean, it meets once a month maybe. And certainly, I'm, I'm confident that the, that the staff could, can answer these questions, just like they answer the questions that, that come up in a myriad of other areas, and they are professionally qualified to make, making those kinds of decisions.
And, and before asking other council members for their questions. Mr. Hubble, do you want to sort of just give us some background on this issue? I know it was not unanimous decision, or actually, you guys could not come to an agreement, so.
Yeah, it was certainly something we flagged for the council to, to have a dialogue around on what the, the, the pros and cons could and should be, and how you, and sort of the will that you want to take on this. And you are correct, the, the council or the commission, I should say, was split in sort of our view on this. I think there is one side that Commissioner Jacobson just sort of took, which is, you know, that of accountability and, and who you know, who, who could and should be responsible for making the assessment of deviations. The counter side of that was really, well, it is a panel of citizens within the community and the community members and allowing, or having the design commission as a body of community members that can help make decisions of what we'll call you know, more subjective, of a more subjective nature. And so that's sort of what the intent of that body is. I will, in response to one comment Councilmember Jacobson made, the planning commission is required to have a set number of people that are actually in the profession. So I think I agreed with everything you were saying up until the point where you said that they weren't qualified. I think that the members of the community that sit on that panel are, are rightfully qualified to be a part of that decision-making body.
Well, I didn't say they weren't qualified, let's be clear about that, Mr. Hubble.
Okay, that was the way I interpreted your comments, so my apologies. But I would say that we, I think, are, had the same challenge that that we're having here, which was trying to decide where as a community we feel the authority to make these sort of subjective decisions should lay. And so, yeah, it was something we flagged for you to, to decide. Hopefully, that's good background for you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Nice.
You know, my thought on this one was that my preference would be the design commission make the recommendation to council and that the council would be the authority that grants it or doesn't. I think, you know, these are volunteers that are within the field, they do understand these types of design aesthetics. So I think they do have a good basis for making the decision. But the number of decisions that they're asked to make on this are so few and far between that I think it should just come to the council after their recommendation is attached to it.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Andal.
Yeah, I think I concur with Saleem on this. What I was curious about was what, to what extent were the new seasons market and curio signs non-compliant with the code? That they needed the waiver, and I, I don't expect anybody to answer that today, but if maybe we could get that between now and the next meeting, I'd be interested in that.
I'm able to answer it in a general sense, which is, I believe both of those buildings were allowed to have a second wall sign because of, you know, how they face on kind of more than one street, they were able to have a wall sign on each side.
Well, so there wasn't anything about the design or anything else, it was just the.
They were able to have an extra sign that wouldn't have otherwise been allowed.
Because they were on a corner, sort of a thing, they face two streets?
Yeah, I mean, like, in the case of new seasons, one side faces the street, one side faces a parking lot, but you can also see it from the street. And so a second sign was allowed there.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I, I'd just like to jump in here. I was listening to the conversation about changing the, I, I will loosely describe it as permit approval process. And I would like, not tonight, at a future meeting, to have an attorney weigh in about the pros and cons of having the city council particularly involved. So that will be coming. I will also just observe from my perch, it is unlikely this is coming back on October fifth. Our list of things to do is far too long to turn it that quickly, so I'm just planting a seed ahead of time that it will move out to a later date.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas.
Actually, I was, I was going to comment on what the city manager just commented on, but go one, perhaps one layer deeper. As opposed to getting the city council into the business of, of doing quasi-sign variances. Perhaps a, a more appropriate method would be to have the design commission weigh in on essentially what would be a variance to a, a sign situation and send that to the hearing examiner, who is the actual decision-maker on variances today in the code. So I would keep the city council out of that business, keep you in the legislative business. And we, we can, Allison and I can talk with, with our legal counsel to figure out structurally exactly what that might look like and bring something back to you.
Great, thank you. I, I like that suggestion. Councilmember Rosamau.
I, I had the same question around the variances that were granted. Sorry, pardon my head.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Jacobson.
I think there may also be a timing question here, because a business wants to get a decision one way or another about something. And, and we're looking at a fairly long fuse on this, I think. If we if we are getting another body involved, and that's why since the planning department makes decisions on code compliance, maybe not daily, but frequently. And they have a big background in doing it, which the design commission doesn't have, and they can say it's a go or no-go. And then it goes to, that has, that has to go to our hearing examiner, fine, but it's, it's on a fast track. And most businesses want to get these decisions made quickly rather than not quickly.
Yeah, Councilmember Reynolds.
Yeah, at first, I was just going to make the same suggestion that Mr. Thomas made. I like that idea a lot. It seems consistent with how we handle variances elsewhere in, in the city code. But also, just generally, this strikes me as the sort of thing that it's X and code already, that it's not new code. Along with many other things, I think it's a good reason to have a phase two on this project, and have, have any changes to this be part of a phase two.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So I think we can move ahead now. Well, I'm sorry, sorry. I, I don't know if there's any consensus at this time on this particular provision. It, it does sound like we're moving away from moving away from the existing language. So how it comes back, I guess, Jeff and Allison, you'll come back with possible alternative language for us.
We, we can develop a recommendation on an alternative process for reviewing these departures from the sign. these departures from the sign requirements and then bring that back next time we meet or at some point in the future.
Okay, great, thank you. Trying to move this as quick as possible. I'm looking at twenty six to three. And they're all, you know, unless people have a problem, I think there are either no action or just, again, staff has concurred with my suggestions, and I'm fine with that, so. Same thing with number twenty, sorry, number thirty one. Again, no action from what I can tell. And now we come to Councilmember Reynolds. And the whole issue of a phase two need to take another holistic approach, and when might be the proper time to do that? And I'm, well, I think a number of you folks have made the case that maybe it needs to be another another look, a holistic approach needs to be had. But not trying to chump the gun here, I'm just wondering whether or not there's consensus maybe to put that on to the planning commission, I'm sorry, planning session early twenty twenty two. Is that something that you folks would be amenable to? Mr. Thomas.
Just quickly, Mayor, thank you. I've heard phase two used in a couple of different contexts here this evening. There were perhaps one for sure, possibly two council members that used it in a context of breaking apart what's been brought to you tonight into a phase one and phase two, and then there's this this more broader, more holistic phase two that I I think Councilmember Reynolds penciled into his his comments that made it into the matrix. I just wanted to make sure we were distinguishing. It's it's been used a few different ways, so any direction provided by the council tonight, let's be super clear about.
Thank you. Councilmember Reynolds, you want to go ahead and just describe what you are looking at or would desire?
Sure, just starting off with a with a broad comment, but I believe that getting in, I just realized my video is off, sorry. Getting the city into code with with the court ruling as quickly as possible strikes me as very important. I also see significant weaknesses and flaws in this code that are inconsistent with our goal of encouraging retail development in town center and and also addressing the parking problems. So I think it is it is very important to take a a fresher look at this code to make sure it is is neither micromanaging nor unnecessarily vague, and in various places it falls victim to both of those in a way that violates my prime paradigm of government regulation, which is establish the outcome you want, do the minimum amount of regulation necessary to achieve that outcome, and then stop. And I and I think we failed that that paradigm in many cases with this code. So I I think it's fully appropriate to take a broader look at this. But we should not let that stop us from adopting the current current proposed changes in order to get us in compliance, then let's get back to this late in twenty twenty one or early in twenty twenty two.
City Manager Bond.
Yeah, I'm I'm trying to find a path here, so Jeff, if you could help me out, I I don't want to restate anything you just said. I I'm aware that an earlier version of code existed that was essentially a Reed versus Gilbert compliance code. The changes then got expanded a bit. So I I guess, Jeff, I'm looking to you. I al- also share a goal of coming into compliance. We're many years out of compliance with the Supreme Court decision. Am I, am I, would we be, would it be possible to do that by October 5th, and is that what the council is looking for? I think how we split the work is may, again, at the risk of repeating what was already said, it's a little difficult to see which bucket things are in unless we break it very clearly in that way.
Deputy Mayor Wiker.
So can I suggest to bring us into compliance, we do what the planning commission has recommended, and our staff have backed up and and put a lot of work into and then add this to the council planning session in January so we can look at in the context of all the other work that we have in front of us as we're coming out of a pandemic and rebuilding our staff and kind of getting used to the new world order that is all our city departments and getting kind of back into a new normal. So I think if we can get this done on October 5th with the bare minimum, we can add it to our planning agenda for going forward with the new council in the context of all the other work that that'll be in front of us at that point. So I would recommend we go that path, just given the constraints and limitations and resource challenges we have that are still ongoing.
Councilmember Enrol.
Yeah, my observation was just though that what we have in front of us right now is not the bare minimum to come into compliance with Reed versus Gilbert. It's more than that, and it it makes some pretty significant changes. I don't want to do a a code amendment that tells businesses that they can have these A-frame signs, and they can be wherever they want, and they can be a lot larger than they used to be, only to have us kind of pawn the phase two and more consideration of it, say, ah, you know what? Really wasn't what we wanted to do. We didn't need to do it to comply with the Supreme Court decision, and and then we go backwards on that. So I I'd be happy to do what we have to do to come into compliance with the Gilbert case, but no more.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Wiker.
And I would just add then, too, that we're trying to solve some problems we don't currently have. I think I heard that a few times in the last two hours of this discussion, so again, if we could implement what our planning commission and staff have worked so hard on, and we've all spent a lot of time now, certainly Benson and Craig with that long list of the matrix we just went through, let's see how this evolves, and should we need to revisit it for a deeper dive for phase two? We can put that in the mid-year planning session, right? Let's see how our businesses respond and reopen and recover after COVID. Certainly with the new restrictions coming in about vaccine cards and negative COVID tests, they're going to have enough challenges on their plates that I think we can sort of put this to bed now and then revisit it should we have more problems or issues going forward. I'm not sure this is the highest priority for our businesses. I think we can adjust and be resilient and trust Jesse and our team to get us there, should these problems arise.
Councilmember Jacobson. Jake, you're on mute.
I don't want you to hear dogs barking, so I'm muted a lot. Anyway, I concur with what Councilmember Reynolds recommends. I think it's the best step forward now. And we create, we solve the immediate problem, and the things that aren't really immediate problems we deal with in the in priority, not only on this subject but other subjects, and we put them in priority and deal with them later.
Can I ask a question? I mean, I wish you could ask, or outside legal counsel, but Jeff and Beal, if you're there, I'm sure you are there. So there were a number of items that were identified, you know, where we had a lot of discussion. And so if if we take those out to be addressed in phase two, is that, are we running afoul of Reed? Are we still in compliance? If we I'm sure you think we were talking about that. I I'm just wondering whether or not if we want to try to get this thing done in the next meeting, if we don't address them, because they're going to require more staff time to get back to.
So, Mayor, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, that, go ahead.
So to to make a a clean break between what's been presented through the planning commission process and achieving what's being coined as, you know, minimum compliance with Reed Gilbert. If that's the direction council would like to go is to is to chunk out the planning commission recommendation to achieve minimum compliance with Reed Gilbert, we would go back. There's, I I've made notes here, there's there's at least a few items that we would need to go back, circle the wagons on with legal counsel and bring back one or more options for you. We can do that. That's that's perfectly fine. We would bring that, Jesse mentioned this a moment ago, a few minutes ago now. It's probably not a turn we're going to make here to have a packet ready for this week for October 5th, but I'm confident we'd have it back to you for a second reading on October nineteenth. Similarly, if you want to, the other option at this point would be to move the planning commission's recommendation in its in the book, in the the structure that it's been presented and bring that back for a second reading. I think similarly, we're probably looking at October nineteenth to bring that back for a second reading as well. So it's just, it's really just getting clarity from the from the council, one way or the other. Do you want to chunk this this body of work from the staff and the planning commission out into two separate items, one that would move forward now for minimum compliance, the other that would move forward at some point to be determined? Or do you want to just continue to move the whole thing forward as is? That's, I think, the the sixty four thousand dollar question in front of the city council.
Okay, and we'll come back to.
And from a legal perspective, we can make either option work, Mayor.
Okay, okay, thank you. So before we come back to that sixty four thousand dollar question, Councilmember Rosenbaum.
Thanks. I'm a little, I'm sort of torn on this one, because on the one hand, I really would like to hear from businesses in town center and kind of get their perspective as to what would be most helpful to them. A a fear that I have is if we do sort of chunk it off, and and Jeff and Allison, if you could maybe address this, and I don't know if Dan's still online, but do you run any risk of of making the code practically worse and harder for for folks? If we sort of make the the changes we need to be in compliance without going a step up as the next step here?
I don't think it would be worse than today. I think, you know, the the changes to come into compliance with Reed are fairly minimal. The biggest one will be related to the duration issue for temporary signs that we were speaking about at the beginning of this meeting. But for the most part, the other sections of the code, like the town center code and the signs outside of town center would remain largely unchanged. And so I think it's it's mostly a status quo option when you're talking about businesses in town center.
All right, thank you.
Good. Councilmember Renee.
I I wanted to ask the director, we're, I think, one of the last cities to be trying to come into conformity with the Supreme Court ruling, right? So aren't we surrounded by jurisdictions that have already made these updates? And, you know, do we not have examples of jurisdictions that have sign code that's compliant, that doesn't create kind of this open-ended permanency for temporary signs? Have you looked at that? I mean, could we not just adopt somebody else's sign code?
We, trust me, adopting someone else's code doesn't doesn't come problem-free. So, Councilmember Neese, I I I worked in some regards, it seems like yesterday, in other regards, it seems like, you know, many, many years ago, but five years ago, I was part of an effort at another city to go through this exact process that this city council is going through tonight. And the ration of temporary non-commercial signs was discussed just as warmly as then and there as it is this evening. I can tell you that that particular jurisdiction ended up ended up implementing into their temporary signage, non-commercial signage regulations, a hundred and eighty day time limit, but that that comes fraught with, you know, enforcement challenges and but the 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 conversation ended up in somewhat of a similar place where, you know, that council acknowledged that ninety nine percent of at least back then, five years ago, ninety nine percent of folks, you know, operate with good intent and signage comes down when the event is over or whatever, whatever, you know, the temporary non-commercial signage is out. So yeah, it it there there is an option to implement a time limit. The the question then becomes, you know, how how stringent does the council want to enforce those provisions moving forward? Then that opens up questions about permit programs and and such, and those conversations have all taken place in other places. And I can tell you that yeah, permit programs for temporary non-commercial signage. I am not aware of a singular example where that's been, that's been implemented full sale, but I would need to. It's been some time since I've looked at that matter as well, so.
Perhaps, Allison, if I can finish, please. Perhaps what we could do, because we were asked earlier for alternatives, is is simply to share some of the code language from other cities, so you can see where they landed. Jeff, I'm having PTSD. I was with you the last time we talked to Sign Code, and it was the same conversation, so this is a tough one. But I I think the ask is fair, if maybe actually seeing the the other sample code language side by side would help. We'd be happy to pull that together.
Okay.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Wiker is on old hand, or you have?
No, this is a new hand, and I just want to close this discussion by turning the floor over to Dan, because he and our planning commission have worked on this with our staff and consultants for ungodly amounts of hours in their own time and while they're in meetings. So Dan, if you want to have the last word on this, I I think we all benefit from your wisdom and insight.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'm not sure I have anything more to add, other than I think you guys are going through the same exercise we did and trying to be thorough in your vetting of this. We struggled as well, a lot of trying to keep ourselves on track to the to the task at hand. And we would welcome to do a more thorough review with the community of this in the in the future when it comes to us, so I certainly, as we tried to come to you with an approach that addressed the current legal situation and would love to look at this again in the future.
Thank you. Okay, we we need to give staff direction, and so as Mr. Thomas has stated, the sixty four thousand dollar question, so basically, if I understand, the choice that has been posed is we take what we have been presented and allow the staff to come back to us with, you know, their options and suggested language, whatever. Or we chunk it up and just have them come back with sort of a bare minimum in order to satisfy Reed. I'm based upon this conversation, this thing is going to take probably a third reading, one way or the other. So hopefully, we can get this thing done before the end of the year. But let's just see if there's any consensus with taking what's been presented and allowing the staff to come back with suggested language options, changes, so. All those in favor of that approach? Thumbs up? Okay, I do not. Dave, again, I can't tell because you're too far. No thumb up. Okay, so, okay. So it appears that that has fallen, so those who are in favor of chunking it up so that staff just comes back with the bare minimum or whatever is necessary to satisfy Reed, thumbs up on that approach. Okay. Dan, I I apologize. You're you're so small that I can't how how did you vote on that one? Yeah, you gotta get closer. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yes, sorry, Mr. Mayor. Can you, can you, option one, can you repeat that again, is to come back with the extended version?
Option one would basically, if I may, Mr. Mayor, be continuing to work the planning commission recommendation based on the feedback we had tonight. As an alternative, we would strip it down and come back with a recommendation, and we're going to have to, you know, massage this a little bit, that is stripped down to Reed versus Gilbert compliant and and move the other changes out to a future work item.
So right right now, there's three that were in favor of the taking what we have here, and there were three that were in favor of chunking that and just sort of just focus on the minimum minimum for satisfying Reed.
And we lost Jake, right? So Jake is gone?
Jake's here.
Jake's here, I see him.
Oh, Jake voted.
Oh, I can't see Jake on my screen for some reason.
He he voted for it, so it's basically three, three. Dave, you're deciding, go go for it.
My my sense here is there's there's more work to do than I think we can do in the near future, so I'm gonna I'm gonna go with option two, and I think we should put this on our agenda for a planning session next year.
Okay, so that's the the world of the council. Go ahead and chunk it up. Mr. Thomas and Allison, I guess you have some direction now as far as next steps, and so thank you, thank you again for all the work, and thank you, Mr. Hubble, on the planning commission. You are thank you, thank you again for all the work. And thank you, Mr. Hublon, the planning commission. You are right, this will come back to you for further deliberations. So, thank you very much. It's been a very lengthy discussion, but a good one. So, we are at-
Mayor, we actually need a motion.
I'm sorry.
Moving the disordness in, in the form that was decided on to a second reading.
Oh, okay. Somebody want to try to-
So be, be something-
I'll try it.
Okay, go ahead.
I, I moved to set ordinance number twenty-one C dash twenty-one for second reading and adoption at a council meeting on October fifth, twenty-twenty-one, or soon thereafter. In the most basic form to be compliant with REED v. Gilbert.
Okay, city manager and city attorney, is that sufficient?
That is sufficient. You know, it's sufficient just to say, as discussed and directed at the council meeting would have sufficed it also. But as Councilmember Neese articulated, that is sufficient.
Okay, so the motion was made by Councilmember Neese. I think it was seconded by Councilmember Jacobson. City clerk, please call the room.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Jacobson?
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Wyker?
Nay.
Councilmember Reynolds? I'm sorry?
Aye.
Councilmember Andrell?
Aye.
Mayor Wong?
Aye.
Councilmember Neese?
Aye.
And Councilmember Rosenbaum?
He must be on mute.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so motion passes. Six, one. Is that right, city clerk?
That's correct.
We're at seven fifty. We still have a long way to go. Do you want to take a ten-minute break, come back at eight o'clock? Okay, so please stop your video and put yourself on mute. See?
Are we good, Andrea? Okay. Mr. Mayor, I'm not seeing everyone back yet, but I wanted to let you know it's eight oh one and we are live.
Okay, I think we have, yep, I think we have enough right now. So we now move to the third item of regular business. This is item number eight on your agenda. Agenda Bill five nine four one, state mandated code amendments. Welcome back. Community Planning and Development Director Jeff Thomas and Deputy Director Allison Van Core. I understand that you have a presentation that you'd like to share. Councilmembers, I'd like to, would like you to hold your questions until after the presentation and the public hearings, if possible. After the public hearings, we'll be able to discuss each proposed ordinance. With that, Jeff and Allison, please proceed with your presentation.
Thanks, Mayor, and we're going to turn this right over to Allison and also another introduction, Eileen Kiefer from Majorana Law. Has been helping us with this particular effort. So Allison, take it away.
Thank you. I'm going to share my screen, and we have a short presentation Eileen and I will be sharing and going back and forth on this presentation. We worked together on this agenda bill and the code amendments. All right, let me start this. All right, so before us tonight are three proposed amendments that relate to three pieces of state legislation that have been passed by the legislature in the past two sessions. So the first one, E S S B fifty-two thirty-five, relates to the number of unrelated people that can live within one dwelling. And the state has prohibited cities from having a limitation on the number of unrelated people that passed this year. And then E S H B ten twenty-three relates to the capacity for adult family homes. These are like a group living situation for seniors, memory care, mental health, and those kinds of things. And they now are required to serve, to be able to serve up to eight people. And then finally, E two S H B twelve twenty, this one relates to transitional and permanent supportive housing and has a number of requirements for cities to allow these types of housing. In terms of timing, twelve twenty comes with a deadline of September thirtieth for cities to come into compliance. The other two bills did not have a specific timeline, but the city does need to make code amendments to come into compliance. And I did, I did want to point out that ten twenty-three was passed back in twenty-twenty, so over a year ago now, and we're past due on coming into compliance with that one. So that's why we're moving these all forward together, because they do all need code amendments that relate to housing and the development code. So they're, they're kind of similar, and it made sense just to look at these all together in a consolidated review. We've also made the decision to move forward with interim ordinances at this time, mainly in response to the September thirtieth deadline. Legislature requires cities to act very quickly to develop legislation on the twelve twenty bill. And we haven't had adequate time to do a full analysis of, you know, how to comply with this legislation and what the impacts will be for the city. And so we're kind of taking a measured approach here and doing the minimum necessary to come into compliance with this interim ordinance. And then also bringing in place a work plan for the next year, which will allow the interim ordinance to extend twelve months and give us time to do additional analysis, legal work, and, and develop a more robust permanent set of regulations. We plan to bring those back to the council next year before the twelve months is up and the interim ordinances expire. Okay, so I'll give you just a tiny bit more information about the first two pieces of legislation, and then Eileen's going to jump in to talk a little bit more about twelve twenty. So for fifty-two thirty-five, again, this relates to the number of unrelated people that can cohabitate in a dwelling. Currently, the city has a limit of six unrelated people per dwelling. And the state law just passed, and it prohibits cities from regulating or limiting the number of unrelated people occupying a house or dwelling. We can still have the limits in terms of the building code and the fire code that relate to safety issues. And we can still have the occupant, occupant limits related to group homes and short-term rentals. City of Mercer Island currently doesn't allow short-term rentals, other than Airbnb, or sorry, other than bed and breakfasts that have a conditional use permit. Okay, I'm going to move on. The next one, ten twenty-three relates to adult family homes, and these are a specific type of home. You know, there's other types of group homes. These ones, the, the term adult family home is defined by the state, and they typically serve seniors and folks with mental health issues, dementia, and, and other things along those lines. And this new regulation that passed last year requires us to change the limit of six folks that can be served in one adult family home and increase that up to eight. So the state has made the decision that these facilities can be licensed to serve up to eight individuals now, and we just need to adjust our regulations to respond to that. All right, Eileen, do you want to jump in and talk about twelve twenty?
Absolutely. Thank you, Allison, and good evening, Mayor and Council. E two S H B twelve twenty relates to both transitional and permanent supportive housing, and really four different categories of this type of transitional and permanent supportive housing. And among other things, the bill establishes a number of prohibitions on cities and counties. Of note for, for our purposes tonight for the interim ordinance is that cities cannot prohibit transitional or permanent supportive housing in any zones that allow either residential units or hotels. is that cities cannot prohibit transitional or permanent supportive housing in any zones that allow either residential units or hotels. Further, with respect to indoor emergency shelters or indoor emergency housing, cities cannot prohibit those types of shelters or housing in any zones that allow hotels, unless those cities authorize such facilities, the indoor emergency shelters or housing in a majority of zones within a one-mile proximity to transit. So there's a bit of an option here. Next slide. Thank you. Additionally, with respect to E2SHB 1220, transitional and permanent supportive housing, cities are allowed to create and maintain occupancy spacing and intensity of use requirements for the transitional and permanent housing addressed in the bill. But those requirements have to be both reasonable and designed to protect public health and safety. These are, as you can see, subjective terms, and this will be something that we will be looking at more closely when we adopt permanent regulations. We undergo that analysis to have a recommendation for permanent regulations next year. And finally, I note that E2SHB 1220 prohibits the use of these intensity of use requirements or occupancy spacing requirements to prevent the sighting of the sufficient number necessary to meet projected need for housing and shelter. So what does sufficient number necessary to meet the projected need mean? At this point, we don't have a precise number to present to you all. I know staff has looked at the point in time count and tried to look at a proportional share of that. I will say Department of Commerce, I believe, is studying the issue and assigning cities a certain proportion of projected need. If we have that before the, before this interim ordinance expires, we will certainly bring that to council. But it's also possible that we may have to come up with our own measure to meet that because I think the Commerce numbers are expected in 2023. So in other words, we don't know what the, the number for Mercer Island is at this point in time, but we will be studying it. This is certainly not, Mercer Island's not the only city that's in this boat. So we'll be looking closely at what neighboring jurisdictions do. And we will come to you with a suggestion on that front with respect to the permanent regs. And next slide. And finally, this last slide is just the, what our recommendation is for tonight. As I believe the mayor already noted, these are three separate ordinances, which will all have their own separate hearings. And we're happy to take questions in turn on each of the three ordinances as council considers them. Thank you.
Great, thank you Eileen. Allison?
Yeah, at this point, we can take any questions. And then we're recommending that the council approve all three of these ordinances tonight to put the interim regulations in place.
Okay, so before we do that, Councilmember Reynolds.
I just want to commend staff and Eileen for their creative work on this. In particular, the definition of housekeeping unit seems tight and a reasonable way around this. But I'd just like to confirm, we're not allowed to limit the number of people that are unrelated people that live together. But we are kind of limiting the number of people that live, unrelated people live together if they're in different housekeeping units. Are, are we confident that will meet the, the, the letter of the law? Letter and intent of the law, because we are in some cases limiting the number of people that live together.
Go ahead Mayor.
I was going to say, do you want to answer that now, or do we wait until we actually are reviewing each ordinance?
I, I think it's cleaner with, since we are going to have a public hearing for each ordinance and they are separate, it may be easier to, to address them in turn.
Okay, let's do that. So council, I'm going to go ahead and we're going to do the three public hearings that we are required to hold.
Let's stop Allison, if I can, yeah, thank you.
Okay, so the first public, I'm sorry. First public hearing is for the purpose of receiving comments on ordinance number 21C-19, amending verse 11 code 19.16.010 definitions relating to the definitions of family and housekeeping units. Individuals wishing to make a public comment on this agenda item may do so by telephone, by using the Zoom teleconferencing application, provided they have registered their desire to make a public comment with the city clerk by 4:00 PM today. City clerk will call your name or telephone number when it's your turn to speak. The public hearing is now open as of 8:30 PM. Those wishing to provide public testimony, please speak audibly, state your name and city of residence for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes. City clerk, is there anyone who has signed up for public comments to wish to address the council on this particular ordinance?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. If there's no further question this evening, the public portion of this public hearing is closed. And the time is now, I'll say 8:14 PM. Okay. The second public hearing is for the purpose of receiving comments on ordinance number 21C-22, amending Mercer Island City Code 19.16.010. No, I'm sorry, definitions relating to adult family homes. Individuals wishing to make a public comment on this agenda item may do so by telephone or by using the Zoom teleconferencing application. As long as they register their desire to make a public comment with the city clerk by 4:00 PM today. City clerk will call you by name or by telephone number when it's your turn to speak. Public hearing is now open as of 8:14 PM. Those wishing to provide public testimony, please speak audibly, state your name and city of residence for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes. City clerk, has anybody signed up to speak for a public comment on this?
There is no one signed up.
Thank you. If there's no further question this evening, the public portion of this hearing is closed and the time is now 8:15 PM. The third public hearing is for the purpose of receiving comments on ordinance number 21C-23, amending Mercer Island City Code 19.16.010 definitions relating to emergency shelters and housing transitional, I'm sorry, relating to emergency shelters and housing, transitional housing and permanent supportive housing. Individuals wishing to make a public comment, this agenda item may do so by telephone or by using the Zoom teleconferencing application. As long as they register their desire to speak and make a public comment with our city clerk by 4:00 PM today. City clerk will call you by name or by telephone number when it's your turn to speak. Public hearing is now open as of 8:15 PM. Those wishing to provide public testimony on this ordinance, please speak audibly, state your name and city of residence for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes. City clerk, has anybody signed up for a public comment and wishes to address the city council?
Mr. Mayor, no one has signed up for this public hearing either.
Thank you. There is, since there's no testimony, the public portion of this hearing is closed. And the time is now 8:16 PM. Council, I suspect you may have several questions for the staff or for outside council related to one or more of these proposed ordinances. I think we're going to take these ordinances one at a time. So the first one is ordinance number 21C-19. And Councilmember Reynolds, I think your question pertained to this ordinance. Councilmember Reynolds.
That's correct. I apologize for speaking out of turn before. Would you like me to repeat the question or?
Yes, would you, would you please?
Okay. What it came down to is my understanding is that this new state law prohibits restrictions on the number of unrelated people living together. And it seems that the solution you have proposed would limit the number of unrelated people living together that are part of different housekeeping units. And I'm just wondering if you're fairly confident that will still comply with the, the intent of the state law?
Yes, go ahead Eileen.
If I may, thank you Mayor Wong. Councilmember Reynolds, I think it's a good question. I think you're actually asking too whether we, our proposed ordinance 21C-19 conflicts with 21C-22. The answer is the, the legislation, ESSB 5235 makes a carve-out for occupant limits on group living arrangements regulated under state law. So therefore, we've retained the, the state law limitation on eight unrelated adults for adult family homes because there is that carve-out under the bill.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask a quick question. So Eileen, if you know, or Jeff, or Allison. So as far as these unrelated individuals, there is no limit, but then it goes ahead and says, but subject to, for instance, the fire code. And so for kind of a typical single-family residence, what is the limit of number of people who can occupy a house per the fire code requirements?
The answer to that is quite complicated, and it depends on the size of the house and the number of doors and windows and, and other such things.
Okay. Is there, I'm sorry, is there a range? I mean, granted, that's complicated and varies, but I'm just curious.
I'm not able to speak to that. I don't know if Eileen is. I think we'd have to have our fire marshal. He gave us a brief explanation in email and said it was much too complicated to cover briefly.
Right, and I actually, I spoke with Jeremy early this morning about this issue. It turns out it's a international residential code issue rather than a fire code issue for residences. I did, as you know, Dawn's out. So I spoke with Gareth earlier today. He had some thoughts. It is complicated. I don't have a range for you without Gareth here. But Gareth had some thoughts too about how to better marry Title 19 with the adopted International Residential Code. So that's, it could be that there is an existing problem with the matchup between those two provisions. We'll be looking at that and hoping to streamline that in the permanent regs that we bring back to you next year.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions regarding this particular ordinance? If, if none, Councilmember, okay, if none, is there a motion to adopt ordinance number 21C-19, amending, around City Code 19.16.010 definitions relating to the definitions of family and housekeeping units? Councilmember Reynolds, your hand is up, I'm sorry.
Yes, I apologize, having trouble with the buttons today. I might just like to circle back to my other question after pondering a little bit. I want to make sure I understand. The adult family home, I, I have interpreted to mean something other than just adults living together. That, that's intended to be a, a supportive care facility of some sort, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So if someone wants to put 20 people that are unrelated and part of a single housekeeping unit in a home, given our definition of family to include a housekeeping unit, as long as it complied with fire codes, that would be allowed with this change, is that correct?
Yes. I mean, just in the same way that if you had an extended family living together with, you know, a very large family with grandparents, uncles and that sort of thing, they already would have been allowed to live in one residence.
But if they are not maintaining a single housekeeping unit, they would not be allowed, correct?
Correct. If it was a more of a boarding house or roommate situation where they had separate leases and separate financial arrangements, that would not be allowed.
And so it's that latter case that I'm talking about, that they're, they're not in a single housekeeping unit and they're not part of an adult family home. That would not be allowed, and frankly, I, I hope it's not. But it does seem like it conflicts with the state law, doesn't it? Because it is imposing a limit on unrelated people. Am I missing something?
So, if I may, I read the definition. I mean, we've had carve-outs here for folks that are unrelated by blood or marriage. A single housekeeping unit, it doesn't matter how big it is, and it doesn't matter your relation to it. There are some exclusions, but it, they are, they're going to be pretty clear-cut. Larger institutional or congregant group living situations, so dorms, fraternity houses, sorority houses. And then Allison and I's favorite, the, the ever-present monasteries and nunneries. I don't know if there, any of those are applicable on island, I doubt it. But it's just an example of the kinds of things that the city would not consider to be a single housekeeping unit. I do want to make clear too that the state law is essentially getting cities out of the business of defining who a family is. That's a long legal explanation of who we define as a family. There's equal protection problems historically with cities trying to define what a family is. So from this bill, it's clear that the intent of the legislature is get cities out of the business of defining a family unit and instead focus on health and safety, adequate parking, adequate number of sanitary facilities, enough ingress egress to get out in case of a fire, things like that. They're really trying to force cities into using their, the IRC and the fire code rather than your zoning with respect to occupant limits.
Okay, so given that background, I'll agree that this is at least content, consistent with the intent of the regulation, if not the wording. So I'm comfortable with it, I guess.
Okay. Again, I would love to entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number 21C-19.
I just had a quick question.
Councilmember Nies.
Can somebody at staff kind of speak to how the public was informed of the three public hearings tonight? And maybe just kind of convince me that the public even knew about this?
We had a public notice back in August, I believe in early August, that I think it went to the newspaper, the bulletin, I can't remember exactly, but it was definitely the newspaper and onto the website.
Did the city conduct any sort of outreach through any of the regular communication channels?
I don't know if this went out in the MI Weekly or social media. I, I know that it was on the website.
Thomas, do you have anything to add or City Mayor?
I do, I do as a matter of fact. So our requirements for public noticing, I think is what Allison just summarized. Well, I just want to reiterate, these are interim ordinances. So in other instances, not only at Mercer Island, but elsewhere, when these types of interim emergency ordinances are brought forward. And we've done this here on Mercer Island in my, in my short time here. State statute allows for the ordinance to be passed and then to have a public hearing within 60 days of the passage of the actual ordinance. So the, the interim regulations are installed on a temporary basis. And then the, the governing body, the city council in this case, has a public hearing after the fact to take public comment on it and can, can certainly consider additional options at that point. But we're, we're trying to get out of that business a little bit and have a public hearing upfront at the time of the interim ordinance, the, the emergency ordinance that passes. So that's what you've got here tonight with the associated work plan that would have them valid for one year and allow then the regular legislative process, which includes the planning commission, of course, to commence within that timeframe.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Jacobs.
I have to answer my own question, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions? If, if not, again, I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number 21C-19.
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilmember Reynolds and seconded by Councilmember Jacobson to adopt ordinance number 21C-19. Any further questions? City clerk, please conduct the roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Jacobson.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Wyker.
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
Councilmember Andrell.
Aye.
Councilmember Nice.
Aye.
Councilmember Rosenbaum.
Aye.
And Mayor Wong.
Aye. Motion passes. Now we are going to move on to a discussion regarding ordinance number 21C-22. So council members, does anybody have a question for staff or for our outside council? Don't see anybody's hand raised. If that's the case, then is there a motion to adopt ordinance number 21C-22, amending Mercer Island City Code 19.16.010 definitions relating to adult family home?
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Reynolds, seconded by Councilmember Rosenbaum. I thought was going to die for a lack of a second for a second. Okay, so any questions at this point? Okay, city clerk, please conduct the roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Nice.
Aye.
Mayor Wong.
Aye.
Councilmember Andrell.
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Wyker.
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobson.
Aye.
And Councilmember Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Thank you.
You asked me?
Yes, I did, sir.
I'm sorry, okay. That was an I, okay, thank you. Motion passes. This one might get a few more questions here. This is ordinance number 21C-23. So council members, do you have questions regarding this ordinance for staff or for outside counsel?
I do.
Yes, Councilmember Andrell.
I mean, we did have some questions from some citizens in terms of how do these state laws really apply to Mercer Island? And I mean, have we had enough time to do a thorough analysis to know that we need to adopt these code changes right now? I mean, that, that we're in a situation where we meet all the requirements, where we have to amend the code with regard to these definitions? I'm, I, I've read the packet, I'm just not that clear.
And I'm happy to answer this and Allison, you can back clean up. I expected we'd have more, more questions on this bill. With respect to this bill, we took a quick look at it because there is that looming September 30th, 2021 deadline. And I'll note, you know, you're, there's no exceptions to the bill for cities of a certain size or anything like that. It's just cities shall comply with it. I'll note that your code, we, we looked at it and it looks fairly compliant on its face. You'll note that the proposed interim ordinance is not long. And indeed, it is making clear two different definitions and making it clear that they include certain types of the interim and permanent supportive housing mentioned within this, within the bill explicitly to make it clear that this is, these types of facilities as defined in the Mercer Island Code are intended to encompass the E2SHB facilities. I think right now, the code may actually be in places more expansive than the bill allows. For, with respect to the permanent regs, it may be that council wants us to take a look at some of the more targeted options of the, you know, the one mile radius from transit or just zones where hotels are allowed. I will say that right now, the code kind of looks at these as, as two different buckets. The social service transitional housing, that's allowed in all zones with a conditional use permit now. And then special needs group housing, which is outright permitted in all zones in Mercer Island. We're also for, with respect to the permanent ordinance, we're going to be taking a look at the CUP requirements for the social service transitional housing to make sure those are E2SHB compliant. But this is our, this is our best guess as to what is compliant under the very, very short deadlines. You know, as, as you know, my law firm does not just represent Mercer Island, we represent other jurisdictions. There's not one ordinance that fits all. We've seen all of our cities scrambling to ensure compliance with the September 30 deadline. So it's, this is, uh, this is our interim fix, but we do, you know, we can come back with something a lot more targeted next year.
Okay. City manager.
I guess that kind of begs the question of, you know, what could happen in the next year? If we've got a super broad ordinance and we're going to go ahead and tighten it up in a year, but, but what, what happens? While the while a potentially overly broad ordinance is in effect.
I saw city, I'm happy to speak to that. I saw city manager Bond pop on. I don't know if she wants to speak.
Why don't you answer that question? I was actually going to just provide a, a separate comment.
Sure. I, I think my response is your, your risk with respect to citing of these facilities, if, if you adopt the interim ordinance is about the same as it is today, given what's on the books today in Mercer Island. Again, your ordinance is already, I think, broader than what the law requires. We have proposed wording changes to the definitions just to make explicitly clear that we are being compliant with the law, but if you do want to tighten it up, that was just something we were not able to do before, to take a look at before September 30.
Mr. Mayor, you know, the comment I was going to make is, I, I haven't actually drafted your legislative priorities yet. I will just tell you in general that when regulations are passed with these kinds of deadlines, it, it puts us in an impossible situation. I will encourage all of you in speaking with your legislators to remind them we're in a pandemic. Giving us a handful of months to get something in place is next to impossible and, and puts us in this situation where we've got to get interim regulations to buy us some more time. I know the Association of Washington Cities attempted to work a compromise to at least get this pushed out to December. I'm not intimately familiar with the conversations. I'm not sure why that failed. But we all want to do good work and not rushed work and this was a very problematic for us. So this is our, this is our path forward, but we'll be ma- maybe making, I'll be proposing something about that in our priorities, you know, to allow good quality work and implementation strategies.
Great, thank you. You know, I'm going, I know that a matrix again was sent out, I think it was from Eileen. So perhaps number of them, we don't have to address because it pertained to ordinances that we already adopted. There are a few questions regarding this particular ordinance. Do you want to go ahead and share the matrix and we can just quickly go through them? Again, only the ones that pertain to 21C-23.
You're going to share, Allison, okay, thank you.
Okay, I can. Just getting it up on my screen, one moment.
I will say I like the matrix idea and I'll probably be stealing that for use with our other clients going forward. It's a good organizational tool.
I agree. So the first one on this ordinance is number three and basically no actions required, so I think we can move on with that one unless somebody has a question. Then the next one that pertains to this ordinance is number six. So again, this is more of a drafting issue. Eileen, do you want to respond to this at all?
Sure, I'm happy to speak to this. This is indeed a drafting issue. The bill itself is a bit convoluted and contains a lot of different ideas in the same place, but it has, it relates to the, I believe the fifth whereas clause in the draft ordinance, which we would be proposing now to split up into two ordinances. That's because there is one sentence in E2SHB 1220 that says cities cannot prohibit transitional housing or permanent supportive housing in zones where residential dwelling units or hotels are allowed, and that's a complete sentence. So that would be whereas clause number one or new whereas clause number five. And the new whereas clause number six would say further E2SHB 1220 provides the city shall not prohibit indoor emergency shelters and indoor emergency housing in any zones where hotels are allowed unless you have an ordinance allowing such facilities in a majority of zones with a one mile proximity to transit. So this is, just would be a second whereas clause because the requirements are a little bit different for these two different types of facilities.
Allison, can you stop sharing? Can you just get a thumbs up if the council is okay with that, that's just a change? Sort of thumbs up for that. Okay, I think there's enough. Okay, Councilmember Reynolds, you have a question?
Yeah, I, I may have missed this, I apologize, but what does a majority of zones mean? Does that just mean, you know, a number of unique zoning classifications or a majority of the space or, or a majority of the frontage on the one mile boundary? Do we know any answers to that?
So I interpret that to just mean a majority would be measured the same way we measure quorum, right, which is half plus one? But I'd need to take a look. I, that's a very good question. I hadn't really thought of it.
But, but half plus one of, as measured by what? Linear frontage feet? Unique different zoning categories? Unique, like, you know, you know, R1 versus R4, do those, does that count as two? And, you know?
That is a really good question. The, the bill doesn't give us any guidance as to how you measure that majority of zones. And in fact, it, I think it would have been easier if they said all zones perhaps. That's something I think, the interim ordinance doesn't slice it like that. So thankfully, that's not something that you guys need to figure out tonight, but it is something we can give some thought to for the permanent regs.
That's what I was going to suggest, thank you.
Okay. So in, in keeping with that and in keeping with giving staff some direction, Eileen direction. Number seven, I think, Eileen, you sort of already touched on this one. Elaborating your response to my question regarding the meaning of within a one mile proximity to transit. In your response, you seemed to give us some possible choices to think about.
Right. So first of all, I'll note that the bill doesn't define transit. A reasonable interpretation would likely include both bus transit stops as well as light range, or light rail, excuse me. Again, the interim ordinance doesn't use this approach because we've really piggybacked off how the, how the code addresses this, this is, but this is something that we can look at with respect to the, to the permanent ordinance. Additionally, too, what we can do is work with the GIS staff to come up with a radii. So we would basically have them map out all of the, the bus stops as well as the light rail station on the island and then draw a one mile radius around there. And that would give us a map if we wanted to use that approach. We think that that net result would likely yield a larger area that's more dispersed throughout the island than if we looked at only the zones where hotels are permitted. But here is one of the places that the bill gives you some choices. You can say, look, we're going to just do where hotels are permitted or we're going to do this within one mile of transit approach. So I would expect us to come back possibly with multiple options for, for council's review.
Okay, maybe we can get a kind of a consensus where council might be at this point. So if you can stop sharing, Allison. So to me, the question is, I mean, I, I like the narrow scope, smaller scopes. I would, my preference is to try to just do it based on the zones where the hotels are permitted. So I don't know if that's, as opposed to this potential expanded area. Councilmember Nice.
I was just, I was going to vote thumbs up, so.
Okay.
I think we're all there. You got the majority there.
Okay, Councilmember Reynolds, are you, did you want?
I was just going to note, it's not clear to me which one is smaller, so could you just rephrase your suggestion to be, to do whichever one is smaller?
He's also a small, geographic area. Okay, let's just do it that way, so. I think there's enough. Okay, all right. So Eileen and staff, I guess you have that direction when you develop the permanent regulations, permit ordinance, I'm sorry. Okay. With that in mind, any other questions regarding this particular ordinance? If not, is there a motion to adopt ordinance number 21C-23? Subject to the additional conversation and guidance given during tonight's meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Jacobson and seconded by Councilmember Reynolds. City clerk, please conduct the roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Jacobson.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Wyker.
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
Mayor Wong.
Aye.
Councilmember Andrell.
Aye.
Councilmember Nice.
Aye.
And Councilmember Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Great, thank you very much. Motion passes. Eileen, thank you for your help. Much appreciated. Thank you.
I have my hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Jacobson, sorry.
I, I would add to that. I think this is an excellent job of wading through somewhat less than perfect guidance from our legislature and I very much appreciate the clarity and cogency you brought to this. Thank you.
Yes, definitely agree with that. Okay, so again, thank you, Allison and Jeff. I think you guys are coming back, I think, or at least Jeff, you are. The fourth item of regular businesses, item number nine on the agenda, agenda, AB 5942, the second quarter 2021 financial status update, 2021, 2022 budget amendments. And for that, we have the, looks like a person with a mustache now. So welcome, City Finance Director Matt Morick.
Evening, council. Matt Morick, your finance director. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Please let me know when you see AB 5942.
Got it.
Great. Okay, thank you, mayor. Tonight, council, I'm going to go through about a dozen slides to provide a brief overview of where revenue and expenditure actuals landed at the end of June of this year. Then I'll walk through the handful of appropriation requests before council tonight that put permit revenues and general fund surplus to use. Staff will be available to answer specific questions at the end of the presentation. This chart illustrates how actual revenues have accumulated in 2021 compared to actual revenues from last year. The blue line represents 2020, while the orange bars represent 2021. You can see between February and March, general fund revenues in 2021 began to outpace revenues from last year and have continued to exceed 2020 revenues through the month of June. This table illustrates the same comparison of revenues through June, but also conveys how expenditures forgive me, how expenditures are tracking in both the general fund and the utility funds. In general, revenues are performing better than 2020 and 2021 expenditures are relatively on track with spending from the prior year. Increased revenue in the general fund is largely due to sales tax continuing to outperform budget estimates. Compared to January through June of last year, sales tax revenues are up by over just over $300,000. And this is primarily due to sustained growth in online sales and a rebound in the construction sector. With construction up, permitting revenues through June are also tracking higher than the prior year. This is predominantly due to large one-time permitting payments received for the Jinghua Property and Town Center and the King County Sewer Project, as well as administrative changes that went into effect in January of this year. So this includes the updated permit fee schedule and staff implementing a better system for employee time tracking that has resulted in more accurately charging for permit-related services. There are four appropriation requests before council tonight and I will go through each one and pause for questions along the way. Staff recommends that council consider adding new positions in the community planning and development department that keeps pace with current demand for permit-related services. This table outlines the positions which amounted to full-time equivalent employees and a half limited term equivalent employee with the full-time positions being funded by permit revenues. It's worth noting that this is the first time in four years that CPD revenues are on track to exceed revenue estimates. I welcome my colleague Jeff Thomas to provide additional back- I welcome, uh, my colleague, um, Jeff Thomas to provide additional background. But staff's underlying intent here is to take an incremental approach to increasing service levels to address the demand for permit-related services. Staff is gonna reevaluate, um, service levels every six months and remain flexible and adapt accordingly. So are there any questions regarding the CPD staffing increase?
Council? Uh, Matt, I don't see anybody's hand. Oh, we have one. Uh, Councilmember Reynolds.
I would just like some feedback from, from either, uh, Matt or Jeff. The, what is the thinking on making these FTE positions versus LTE positions? Do we have confidence that the, I, I, I actually recognize the hire needs to be made because things are backed up. But do we believe this is a permanent increase in need?
Yeah, Councilmember Reynolds, be happy to comment on that briefly. Um, the first two, I, the first two, uh, requests on that list that Matt just had up on his screen are restoring, um, one-point-oh FTE positions that were fractured to point-five FTE positions, uh, last year. So Senior Plans Examiner, as well as the, uh, Permit, um, Permit Technician Coordinator, sorry, I always get those confused. Position, um, we have existing point-five FTEs on our staff right now in those positions. So, um, by bringing those back to a one-point-oh, uh, we'd be moving, um, those two positions back from the, the point-five responsibility to the one-point-oh responsibility. I can tell you with the building plans examination work, uh, the demand has always been there. It's that we, um, at the time last spring, had to make some very difficult decisions about, uh, recalibrating our expenditures to, uh, the funds that were available. So, um, in regards to the second request, I would, I would make a similar comment. Uh, the, the work never went away. It's that it's, it's gotten compressed and, um, elongated per se where, uh, things just get done on a much longer timeframe than, um, what you would with, with a little bit more horsepower. The third position or the third request, excuse me, the Assistant Planner position that was on that list, that is a new request, um, in terms of the, the classification of Assistant Planner. And the request basically, um, has, has brought, uh, multiple positions that were eliminated last year, um, namely a Planning Manager, a Senior Planner, and then Planner Position for a period of time, and boiled those back to an entry-level Assistant Planner Position, just to be candid with the council. With such a tough market that's out there right now, uh, everyone's trying to steal everyone else's staff. We're seeing it. I, I, I mean, I, I'm almost tempted to say daily, but I'm not sure if it's quite at that frequency yet. But, um, so the strategy here is to add a low cost, um, someone who has the appropriate education, maybe some intern entry-level experience, uh, to bring them in. And, uh, you know, uh, homegrown, um, train them up from that entry-level position. And hopefully they, they grow, uh, they learn, they grow, and they stay with the organization over time. So that's a strategy there. Um, that final request, the LTE, that's, um, that, that would be just to extend the existing LTE, um, through next year. And, um, you know, a couple of things going on there. That position with the cuts from last year, we, we hit this gap where, um, we were having trouble filling records requests, um, in an appropriate fashion and some other, uh, kind of administrative assistant-type duties. This position would continue to do those things that are being done now and also help make a dent in catching us up with some much-needed, um, archiving work that we have going on. So, um, that is the scope of that, but that would be limited term, uh, in nature, so.
Thank you.
Councilmember Jacobson?
A couple of questions. One, uh, the first one is for Matt, and that is the, uh, fiscal's twenty-twenty-one and fiscal twenty, twenty-twenty-two costs, are those, are those fully burdened? Second question is for Jeff, and that is, the, uh, first two positions, uh, are, are these people, the current persons doing this, are they working half-time or are these duties split between people? So they're doing half-time one thing and half-time something else that isn't here?
Correct. So, um, the first position, Senior Plans Examiner position, uh, is half-time in CPD and has been half-time in City Manager's Office, um, since last year. So, um, that half-time in City Manager's Office would be trans, I don't want to speak for Jesse, but that, the person that's doing that position now would come back to CPD as a full-time employee. And then the second position is half-time, uh, in CPD with the, the Permit Technician role and half-time with the Customer Service Team. We may provide that some runway because, uh, we do have someone, uh, that's been working part-time for us to cover a maternity leave this year, who, uh, has expressed an interest in continuing to help us out a little bit with the software upgrade that we have to do with the permitting software. So, um, that half-time CST may continue, uh, into next year before that full transition gets made.
If I can add one more, uh, one more layer here, the, the spit, split position, um, I think it's, I think most of you know, and I feel comfortable saying that that was, that's Gareth's role. And you may recall that at the time we were making the service reductions, I also had a retirement. And the person that was managing all the sound transit work retired from the city. So we put Gareth in the split position, and I'll be looking for a different strategy now to, to cover that sound transit work. So, uh, but Jeff needs the help, and I have the person, half of the person with all the technical horsepower to go help him. So that's a, a natural move.
Councilmember Nice?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to give, um, the CPD Director the opportunities to kind of speak to SLAs and the customer service aspect of clearing the backlog with these resources. You know, if you are able to get these appropriations and get these people all in place and everybody's working and rowing in the right direction. And do you, do you want to speak to the public on what they might expect in terms of, uh, a better experience or improved timelines?
Yeah, this, um, these, these requests certainly contribute towards that end, um, that desired end. I would also say, you know, there's a couple of different things in play here, right? One is the human resource aspect of it, and then there's also, um, you know, the process that we offer for, for different, the, with the way we process permits and, um, the way the code prescribes process as well. And then, of course, there's, you know, trying to, I, I think we had some of this dialogue, uh, here earlier this evening with wanting to, um, look at our codes and, and, you know, look at things that make sense in our codes, right? And make them as sensible, uh, and as straightforward as possible. So there's different elements that go into the customer experience. And of course, then there's also the city, uh, working with our customers. And this, I, I stole this phrase from, uh, someone I used to work with, but, uh, the phrase is building a better customer. The more straightforward we can make things and, uh, you know, present predictability, um, that helps create a better customer to get a better seminal in the door to, um, the, the, the whole, the whole system works better, right, from beginning to end. So, um, having appropriate levels of human resource available to assist in these efforts is definitely a big part and a big, uh, uh, critical starting point for, uh, the journey that we need to, uh, continue here, um, to get to where we want to be.
So, so Jeff, Councilmember Nice, um, I'm not sure we could answer the question about how soon do we see the turn? Uh, I, I think we can make some fairly immediate internal kind of maneuvers and pursue this as quickly as possible. I don't know if there's any additional comments you can offer on timeline, as I know the council members fielding a lot of, um, concerns, if I may, about permit turn times right now.
Well, um, definitely, uh, again, it's being someone hesitant to, you know, to map out a timeline for you because we, in some regards, we don't know. But, uh, this, this definitely contributes towards that. And, um, you know, we are seeing with our recent hire, um, a Principal Planner position here. About eight weeks ago, we are definitely starting to see, um, some of the unlodging with our planning reviews occur. Not only in the permit review, but in the customer service end upfront as well, where we're, um, there's just been a general improvement there that's occurred with our, um, immediate timeliness to respond to requests and, uh, start to move reviews, especially in the shoreline permitting area. We've seen some noticeable improvement here, uh, almost immediately and then, um, through into the, the backend of the building.
Mr. Mayor, if I could add one more color commentary, because I don't, I, I don't want Jeff to turn off his screen without acknowledging the good work he's done. You know, we're, we're having this conversation with you today because, you know, he stepped in along with Matt and did a deep dive into our permit fees very quickly at the end of last year. And also at the same time, got the house in order in terms of how we were tracking our time. And it's a combination of all of these things that brings us here tonight to be able to say, okay, we know we're not meeting our service levels, but now we also have the revenue to support the staffing. And if you recall, looking back year after year, we were upside down. Um, and that, that was creating a whole nother problem for us. So I'm, I'm proud of the work we've done. Uh, we've been very thoughtful and strategic. And I, I, you know, appreciate you considering support for these positions so that we can get our level of service back, um, to where I think everyone would like it to be.
Thank you, uh, Senior Manager, uh, well, and I, I also thank you, Jeff. I think we all know that you and your staff have been working, uh, very hard, uh, a number of different arenas. So, um, so Matt, um, go ahead. I know that there's some other appropriations that are on the table.
So Matt, if I may, just because the toggling back and forth gets disruptive, can you just go ahead and finish your presentation and then we'll just break from there for the, um, remaining questions and discussions?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Staff is also recommending tonight that the council fund a temporary position through twenty-twenty-two in the Human Resources Division to help address pandemic-related staff work, finish longstanding work items, and just complete, um, current projects. The appropriation request amounts to one-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand from the twenty-twenty general fund, uh, year-end surplus, which will fund the HR Specialist Position through December, now through December of twenty-twenty-two. Um, it's, it's important to note that the HR team anticipates that staffing levels will return to current levels in twenty-twenty-three. The number of special projects and litigation requiring outside legal counsel has, has already outpaced the city attorney's twenty-twenty-one expenditure budget by a hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars. So the appropriation request before council is for two-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars to cover the expenditure budget overage to date and to continue to provide specialized legal support to see through the city's work plan and the ongoing response to the pandemic. We are tracking all legal costs associated with the pandemic, and we are beginning to look, work through opportunities to fund, use federal funds on these expenses. So just wanted to add that point. The final appropriation request involves upgrading the video and audio equipment in the police department's interview room. The sixteen-thousand-nine-hundred-dollar appropriation would come from the nearly a hundred thousand dollars of one-time monies that the city received from the state's City Assistant Fund to pay for the new mandates that are the result of the twenty-twenty-one legislative session. So this equipment upgrade is required as a result of, of House Bill twelve-twenty-three. And so in summary, um, this table, it is, it is not in the financial status update, but it, it lays out the appropriation request before council tonight, um, specifically in the blue rows relative to prior appropriations of general fund surplus that the city council has approved earlier this year. So with a council's approval this evening of these four appropriation requests, one-point-two million of the original two-point-two-four-million-dollar twenty-twenty-year-end general fund surplus will remain. And so the recommendation for council tonight, um, is to adopt ordinance twenty-one-twenty as described in Exhibit Two of the Agenda Bill Packet. And at this point, I will stop sharing, and staff is ready to answer any questions regarding the appropriation requests.
Great, thank you, Matt. Uh, Councilmember, um, Andrell?
Uh, thank you, yes. Uh, my question about the HR specialist. Do we have a, a person already kind of on staff as a temporary person? If, if the funding starts now, don't we need some, um, ramp-up time to find and hire?
Yeah, we'll have to put the position out, um, and we'll, you know, our typical time for, um, recruiting for, sorry, Chief of Administration, Ellie Spades. Thank you, Councilmember Andrell. Our usual, uh, recruitment time is three weeks. Um, and then, of course, there's, uh, the back and forth negotiation and the interview. And so it will take us a little time to, um, to get someone on board, uh, but we're hoping to do it, uh, as quick as possible.
Okay, and so the hundred-and-fifty, is it a hundred-and-fifty-six or a hundred-and-sixty-five? Um, is that fully loaded salary and benefits?
Salaries and benefits.
For what, fourteen, fourteen months are you saying?
Fourteen, fourteen and a half months, yep, yep.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions? We're, yes, Councilmember Raj, Jacobson?
It's not really a question, but it's a comment. That is, with respect to the additional funds of being requested by the City Attorney's Office. I, first of all, I'm, I, I think that's something with which I totally and wholeheartedly agree. Secondly, I think the city manager should be commended for reaching out to get the kind of expertise we, we need in an increasingly complex world of regulations and legislatures, running wild with legislation that isn't well-written and, uh, requiring somebody like Eileen today to demystify that. So I, uh, kudos to the city manager for, for getting these services which keep us ahead of a power curve.
Thank you. I, you know, I'll give a shout-out. We have a lot of partners right now, uh, supporting us on legal work. You saw, uh, two of our firms represented tonight. I, I'm appreciative of the creative way in which our, we're resourcing our work right now. And obviously, um, Bo Park, our city attorney, is, is driving that, that train. So thank you, council. Uh, I hope that this trend doesn't increase, right? Maybe fewer attorneys next year will be our goal. No offense, Bo.
Hey, no offense here either, you know?
Good point.
So, anyway, um, Matt, well done on the presentation. Uh, folks, are there any other questions? Uh, if not, I certainly would like to entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty-one dash twenty, admitting the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two biannual budget.
Done, sir. Second.
Been moved by Councilmember Nice, and I give it to Councilmember Rosenbaum on the second. Uh, City Clerk, please conduct roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Andrell?
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Aye.
Mayor Wong?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobson?
Aye.
Councilmember Rosenbaum?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Wyker?
Aye.
And Councilmember Nice?
Aye.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Uh, motion passes. We now move, uh, to the fifth item of regular business, or item, um, number ten on your agenda. This is Agenda Bill five-nine-three-three, the Town Center Moratorium. Proposed retail use adjacent to street frontages, commercial floor area ratio and no, no net loss requirements. Back for, I don't know how many times tonight, we have our Community Development Director, Jeff Thomas, and this time Economic Development Coordinator, Sarah Valubis. Jeff, uh, welcome back again.
Thank you, Mayor, for the fourth and final time, I believe. So Sarah, um, Sarah's gonna bring up here in just a moment. Uh, we've got a, a short set of slides we'd like to, um, jog through perhaps. We're gonna move through the first, uh, handful pretty quickly, and then we'll spend a little bit more time on the backend. So, um, council, just by way of introduction, Sarah has, has been working on this with me at the staff level, um, through the entire journey, going back to the beginning of this year. And then, as you're well aware, we had community attributes, um, we still do under contract. They're not here with us tonight. Um, we're, we're kind of at the moment here, uh, this evening, where we're, we're talking about We're kind of at the moment here this evening where we're talking about amending the development code. So Elliot and Ethan got the night off and, you know, we'll see what comes of it here this evening. So ultimately, tonight, ideally, we'd like to get some direction from the council. But we'll see how it goes after we move through the slides and answer your questions and have a discussion about it. So Sarah, why don't you roll forward here to slide number two. First couple of slides are really just, you know, by way of background, just to set the table for those watching tonight and, of course, for the council. We've had a moratorium in part of the town center outlined and read there on the map dating back to June of 2020. And, you know, going through those first handful of meetings there in 2020, I believe it was in September of last year, council got to articulating that they're interested in preserving existing commercial retail space and providing space to meet future demand as well. So we went through the budget process last fall. Council appropriated some funds in this year's budget to bring on some expertise. And that was by way of Community Attributes. And we'll move to the next slide. So Community Attributes, they did some analysis there as summarized on the screen. The conversation with them in the city council started in April of this year. And we had a couple of meetings in April when there was a presentation, I think a subsequent presentation, definitely some robust council discussion, which concluded that portion of it on April 20th, when the council directed staff to complete additional analysis and research legislative options for resolving the moratorium. So that brings us through April of '21. Next slide, please. We, the staff, along with Community Attributes, came back to you on July 6. And I'm not going to go through this entire list, but following up on the April 20th direction, we presented a range of options ranging from item one there, do nothing, to item six, which was essentially mix and match various options two through five on the list. Next slide, please. Where the council ended up on July 6 was an expression of interest in option six from the slide before, which essentially was composed of the following. Updating what's commonly referred to as the pink line map, but you see the official code citation there on the screen under item one. So that was essentially option three from the previous slide. Item two was a new town center commercial floor area racial requirement. That was option five from the previous slide. And then tacked on to the end of that was to investigate the applicability of an new town center no net loss requirement, which was a standalone option four from the previous slide. So beyond July 6, staff and Community Attributes went to work on, working on those three items on that now previous slide. As Sarah buzzed ahead here, she took jogging literally. So we'll move to the next slide here. And I want to pause here for a minute to talk about this town center commercial FAR concept. It's important, before, you know, we get into the calculation of it here, which is the seven-step slide in front of you, I just want to take a moment to color commentary maybe a little bit. The commercial FAR concept here, it's presenting a direct relationship, right, between the retail restaurant area relative to parcel size. So we've talked about this previously using a one-acre concept example, one-acre parcel. And then an FAR number will then give you a percentage of that one-acre square footage, which is what the requirement would be. This is not a kind of a shifting scenario where you take some from some, you know, you take some from somewhere and you, you know, get some from somewhere else. This is where parcels that potentially, if this moves forward and becomes part of code, each parcel will have a direct requirement, parcels that are identified to participate in this, and we'll get to that in a minute, to contribute that proportional share to the overall. So it's not like an exchange game or something like that. This is every parcel that's identified to partake in this must play its part, right? And I think that's important because that's come up a couple of times here as we led up to tonight's meeting in various communications. And I wanted to make sure that we're all understanding that the same way. So understanding the concept of the commercial FAR, you know, Sarah and I worked year diligently going back in the last number of weeks to really try and boil this down as simple as possible for ease of digestion of the concept, right? So we're going to expand on each of these in the next couple of slides, but just to kind of summarize here, you know, it starts with the pink line map because we need to figure out where we want that type of activity to occur in the town center if we want to make any changes to what's in the code now. You go through your, you know, drawing out your data sources in steps two through four. Step five is where you establish your numerator in the equation to do the math. Step six is where you establish your denominator with the net parcels for footage. And then step seven is the actual calculation itself to get the FAR. So we're going to run through each of these in a little bit more detail in the next few slides. And let's go ahead and do that now. Next slide, please. So this slide covers steps one through three. Okay, so step one again is taking the pink line map that's in the code and either affirming that it's good to go as-is or saying, hey, we're interested in making some surgical changes to it. So what you see here on the right-hand side of the screen, and it's Exhibit 1 in your Agenda Bill Packet to the Agenda Bill here this evening, is a proposed surgical alteration to the existing pink line map that's currently in the code. So there's three key things here we need to look at. We need to look at the lines that are pink. Those are already in the code as pink lines and here they're proposing to be unchanged. Then you look at the kind of purplish-blue type hatching that's overlaying a pink line. Those are areas proposed to be removed from the existing map that's in the code. And then you look at the third type here on this map. And that's where you've got kind of, it almost looks like a Christmas line, red and green, a little bit less pink and more red with the green dots. Those are proposed additions to the pink line map in the code where we want to see the regulatory authority to maintenance those types of uses that we're looking for at the street level areas for restaurant retail type uses in the future, right? So this map will not only set in motion for, you know, new or redevelopments, but it will also take existing developments when tenant vacancies occur to make sure that we're having uses come in after previous uses that are within the mix that we're looking for in the town center. Now, I will say, just speaking briefly here to the proposed additions and additions, the additions there at the north end of the town center in the 27th corridor, those additions are existing, mostly except for the Tully's parcel, they're existing developments, more recent type developments, right? So we want to add those to the map to have that kind of corridor effect coming from 76 around onto 27th and then eastward to the edge of the town center. And then also down at the southern boundary there along the 78th corridor, we wanted to add in extending that 78th corridor to add in those types of uses. We want to see extend more south and have that kind of corridor type effect with a few extensions there off to the west on 29th and the east on 30th. The proposed deletions, you see a couple dangling ends there where existing pink lines runs right over to media, kind of just, you know, taking edges of those parcels there. It was recommended by Community Attributes that we might want to remove those, being that we're not envisioning media as kind of having those types of activities. And then the triangle type parcel there at 76th and 27th, we identified with the help of a few others, some potential challenges in either having new type uses come into those, the existing building, or certainly that parcel redevelopment. You might have some code challenges in achieving that. So we thought to remove that as well. The final thing I'll say about the pink line map is you'll notice on 78, even though we were trying to extend that corridor effect, the three parcels on the east side of 78th, right at the southern boundary there, the PSC substation, the post office, the fire station, we left off. The pink line proposed changes as we didn't see those three parcels necessarily redeveloping on a roughly a 25-year timeline, which is what we've been considering. So I'm going to pause there. Are there any questions about this step one?
Or comments? No questions right now, Raja.
Okay, then we'll move to step two. So step
Councilmember Andrell.
Thanks. So when is the time going to be right to talk about whether there are additional areas where council members might think that a retail street frontage requirement should be put into place? And I'm speaking specifically, Jeff, when you and I talked about the, I'm thinking about the east side of 77th, south of 29th.
No time like the present right now.
Yeah, so that is, right now, that's the back of retail. But since we did not extend the moratorium to the farmer's building and we know there will be townhomes along the west side of 77th, south of 29th, I had asked and proposed that it might make sense to put a retail requirement on the east side of 77th, south of 29th because there will be residential units in that area. It does seem to make the street more pedestrian and friendly and consumer-friendly by requiring retail there as opposed to just having, you know, blank facades or residential only on both sides of the street. So I'd be interested in seeing that change. I don't know if others would or not.
And Mayor, if I may, just provide a little bit of an editorial comment to that. The net effect on a potential FAR calculation would really only be adding one additional parcel to the calculation because every other parcel on that block that council members referring to is already included in the FAR calculation because they all have potentially a pink line touching some boundary of those other parcels. So it's just that one small parcel kind of right to the right of the AV EVE there on 77th that would actually be getting added to an FAR calculation. So so staff is no objection to the suggestion. If the majority of council would like to direct us to include, run the pink line down the east side of 77th, we can do that.
Jeff, I'm sorry, I know that other council members have their hands raised, but can you just remind, I think about this, why this was being excluded or not added this time?
Yeah, sure. What Sarah and I learned here as this, you know, we've continued to learn and and corridor effect that's referenced there on the slide in the first bullet under step one is having that type of activity on both sides of the street tends to land itself together. So it is generally viewed as when you can concentrate and have this type of corridor effect, these types of areas for retail restaurants tend to be more successful. So knowing what's on the west side of 77th, the, you know, what staff put together here was to not have it on the east side of 77th. But again, it's, you've got one, two, three, four, five out of six parcels will already be included in the FAR requirement. So we'll just be adding that sixth parcel in this particular case.
Okay, Councilmember Rosenbaum.
Yeah, Lisa and I were on the same call this week. I think we answered the same question at the same time. So I also think we should consider this, you know, it seems to make sense to me and curious with the rest of the council. Thanks.
Okay. We're going to stop here and let's see if we have any kind of general consensus. So council, oh, I see some thumbs up adding it along the east side. Okay, I think so. All right. All right, Jeff. Sarah, you have that. All right.
All right, we're one for one here. So okay, let's move on to step two then. So step two then is then taking, sorry, you jumped ahead. You need to move back to slide. Thank you. Step two then is not only adding an L to commercial in step two that we missed, but we'll also be determining then our town center-wide commercial square footage inventory. That's going to be the starting point for developing the numerator in this calculation. So with the help of Community Attributes, we were able to tap into 2021 quarter three CoStar data. And the answer to that question is with the parcels that are identified on this current map with the proposed pink line layout, the answer is 309,560 square feet. So that's step two. It's a, step two is simply a data draw and Community Attributes did that for us. Step three then is an update to Elliot's analysis going, Elliot from Community Attributes, his analysis going back to April of this year. It's updating the additional supportable commercial square footage town center-wide. So some of you may recall way back in April when the draft report was presented to council, the number was, I believe it was just a hair over 30,000. And then there was some council direction in April. I think Councilmember Reynolds was definitely in with some comments on that, talking about trying to narrow down the department revenue data a little bit more using updated growth targets that had just kind of wrapped up there in the spring with the GNPC. So we went back and we changed a few variables. And I think when we presented in July, that just over 30,000 had been up to about 34,000. And then most recently, 2020 Department of Revenue data has come out. So we took a look at that and we used that to update number again, which was favorable to Mercer Island. And so now the newest, most up-to-date number is 37,200. So that's, that number is really just, you know, it's been a continual update with changing variables updated data that's come out over a span of months to get us to that number now. Okay. Let's, any comments on either of those two things, data draws and the calculation step three?
Nothing right now, Jeff.
Okay, Sarah, let's roll forward then. So you've got your, in step two, we had our commercial square footage inventory. Step three, we had identified then the additional supportable commercial square footage town center-wide. When you add those two numbers together, that is kind of the state you're driving into the ground that you want to see ultimately in the town center at full redevelopment build-out, right? So that number is 346,760 square feet. That's the end game essentially, is what the city would be looking to achieve to go through and have the parcels redevelop that are identified as part of the FAR calculation. So now we have to pause in step four and we have to consider, oh, wait a minute, we've already had some recent redevelopment occur, right? So what does that mean? How much is there? What is that? And so Community Attributes went back to the CoStar data after, with help from the city staff in identifying parcels that have redeveloped. And we used 2005 as the tipping point because that was really when the first of the wave of mixed-use development came online was 2005. So we use that as the baseline to work forward from post 2005. So we identified those parcels. Community Attributes went back to CoStar, that 2021 data and said, how much of, how much commercial square footage has we developed post 2005 in these parcels? The answer to that, it's a The answer to that, it's a data draw is sixty seven thousand three hundred and sixty four. Um, that would include constructed and vested projects uh post two thousand five through today. So that's step four. Step five then is simply nothing more than a math calculation. We take step two, which is the three hundred and nine thousand number. We add step three, which is the additional supportable score footage that uh was calculated per Elliot's report. And then we subtract out the post two thousand five development, because we don't anticipate those parcels short of some sort of catastrophe. We don't anticipate those parcels are gonna redevelop on a twenty five year horizon. Um, similar to those public owned parcels down on seventy eighth, we don't anticipate that on that twenty five year horizon. So step five actually produces the numerator here in our calculation. Two plus three minus four equals two hundred and seventy nine thousand three hundred and ninety six. That's what we're looking to achieve. Okay, in terms of new square footage coming online. Let's roll to step six, next slide. Step six is simply then let me, before I get to step six, let's look at the map on the right hand side of the screen. So the map on the right hand side of the screen. If you think of the three maps that we've looked at in this presentation, the pink line map, the map on the previous slide that had orange parcels. If you take all the parcels on the pink line map that have a pink line next to them and you subtract the parcels on the previous slide which were orange, this is what you're left with, every parcel identified in blue. The blue parcels are the parcels that the commercial FAR requirement would be that these parcels would be subject to that requirement. This is the residue from the pink line map minus the already developed parcels. Give you this, okay? So that two hundred and seventy nine thousand three hundred and ninety six numerator, that would be achieved on these blue parcels. So that's the numerator. The denominator is simply taking the parcel areas of all these blue parcels going into King County assessor data and just adding up the parcel areas. And that number equals one million sixty five two seven three. Okay, that's just the total parcel area of all these blue parcels. So now you've got your numerator, you've got your denominator, and you've got the next slide which is basically putting all this together, okay? So step seven, the actual calculation then. Again, just to recap, you've got your step two, which is your inventory. Your existing inventory, that's three oh nine number. You're adding the additional supportable to it, the thirty seven two. You're subtracting the post two thousand five redevelopment, that's the sixty seven three to get your numerator in step five, which is the two seventy nine. Your denominator is the million sixty five in step six. Step five divided by step six produces a commercial FAR calculation of zero point two six two three. Okay? I will say, um, someone's someone significantly smarter than I uh pointed out that, hey, um, it'd be really interesting to look at the post two thousand five redevelopment, what's the FAR of what's occurred so far with that mixed use type of redevelopment over that sixteen year period? Um, that got figured out and I will tell you that it is a point one 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 five. So in other words, this commercial FAR calculation here on the screen, the point two six two three. Uh, so your future development, subjecting that future development to that commercial FAR on the screen is about two point three five times greater than the FAR that's been achieved so far in the post two thousand five redevelopments. So, um, in conclusion, if we were to institute this commercial FAR requirement, remember I said back at uh, I don't know what it was now, slide four or something, that the end stake in the ground is achieving that three hundred and forty six thousand seven hundred and sixty. Well, if we apply the commercial FAR requirement of the point two six two three to the parcels on the blue map from the last slide or the slide before that, whatever it was, uh, you will get to that end game of the three forty six seven sixty of full build out. So that's what all this means. I think we have one more slide for you, Sarah. You want to roll forward? I think this is um more or less from your agenda bill, but I'll just recap it here while we're, while we're on camera on the record. So tonight, um, should council be inclined tonight to provide direction to staff? Uh, staff would be looking for the council to provide direction to proceed with necessary code amendments to the municipal code, chapter nineteen eleven as follows. First, to provide direction to update essentially the pink line map that's identified in exhibit one in your packet and we covered here in the presentation tonight. Two would be to provide direction to run through um the legislative review process to institute a new town center commercial floor area racial requirement um as presented or as slightly amended as a couple of council members pointed out earlier with adding a potential parcel on the, from the pink line map. So then that FAR requirement would be subject to parcels identified in exhibit two in your packet, which was the parcel uh map with the blue shaded parcels on it. And then item three would be then that we haven't uh, we're gonna discuss right now, which would be to include a new selective town center no net loss requirement to post two thousand five redevelopment par- parcels as identified in exhibit three. So what that is, the sixty seven thousand in change number, which is the existing commercial space, which is contributing to the end goal of the three hundred and forty six thousand. We want to make sure we don't lose that over time. Now again, we don't anticipate those parcels are gonna necessarily redevelop on a twenty five year timeframe. But to ensure that if something catastrophic, for example, was to occur, we want to uh make sure that we don't lose anything square footage wise, that's there now. We don't necessarily need to increase it, because other parcels that will redevelop in the future will handle that, but we don't want to lose anything. So that's the no net loss component to this. So those would be the three requests for direction if councils inclined to provide it. Um, quickly, the updated schedule. Sarah and I are gonna be speaking with the planning commission tomorrow night to provide some background on what's occurred today with all this and to update them on what occurs here this evening. Then we are going to schedule a public hearing uh to be determined for either the twenty seventh of October or November third to present the actual code amendments to the planning commission. Uh, we'd be back to council in November. Then to uh present the planning commission's recommendation on final code amendments to achieve this. And that would be on November sixteenth, the first reading, and just in the nick of time. Uh, second reading would be uh the first of December, which could be potentially your last meeting of the year. With that, Mayor, there's hands up, and I am done with what I needed to tell you.
Thank you, Jeff. You did very well and much appreciated. Um, Councilmember Reynolds.
Yes, I, I know we just took this presentation down, but can you bring it back up for a moment, please? Uh, can you back up one slide? I just wanna, well, first off, it, it just Jeff, uh, to you and Sarah, thank you. I think you guys did a great job both on the work and and the presentation. Um, I I'd like to ask about the change we talked about earlier this evening about the east side of seventy seventh, I guess it is. Um, I wanna make sure I understand the ramifications of this, because I think it goes in, in two conflicting directions, and I wanna make sure you can confirm my impression on that. Um, first off, if we do extend that pink line map uh to the east side of seventy eighth or seventy seventh, that would impose a retail frontage requirement on that side of seventy seventh that is not currently there, which at least in theory creates the opportunity for more retail. But I believe it would also uh put that number in to line six, so that one zero six five would increase to something larger. I don't know how big that lot is.
Correct.
So that the FAR requirement then would shrink. Is that correct?
Slightly, yes.
Do you, do you have a sense as to how much that would shrink by?
Um, um, by slightly, I think it'd probably be hovering around point two six, but we can certainly try and figure that out for you here on the fly. Because that's a good, that's a good question. I probably should have been prepared to address today, and I'm not.
Yeah, I I I'm thinking it will still round to point two six, but since I don't know how big that lot is, I I can't tell you. But I'd be curious to know.
Okay, Jeffrey, you gonna try to do the calculation now?
Um, we'll try and weave it in, but let's keep going with questions and we'll.
Okay.
We certainly circle back if Sarah or somebody wants to do it in the background.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Nice.
Well, I first, I would give Jeff a little bit of time to look at a parcel up on King County parcel viewer. I don't think it's a very big parcel, so it's not gonna be very dilutive. Uh, I wanted to thank Jeff and Sarah for their staff work on this. Elliot um did a great job supporting us from a consulting perspective. Uh, but I think it was critical to understand it. Also, you know, Councilmember Reynolds, Mayor Wong, were both working uh together with me with staff on this. Uh, I think it was a really uh uh, it was a process that worked very smoothly. I think they took a lot of feedback from the group uh and we came out with a pretty good outcome here. Uh, I, I think that looking at the parcels that are in blue and looking at the pink line map and the amendments to it, you you can see that we were very cognizant of the FAR and not trying to dilute the point two six with anything that wasn't critical to building that number up. And that meant not putting anything then that has been redeveloped or that was not likely to be redeveloped. And that speaks directly to that small, basically undevelopable triangle that's over on seventy six and twenty seven. So I think it's smart to put the, the retail along the east side of seventy seven. Uh, we just got the permit application or pre-application notice today for the forty eight uh townhouses. So it's definitely something that's going on uh across the street. And I think it would be a shame for, you know, forty eight high end townhouses to face the back of uh basically uh retail stores. So, you know, in terms of trying to come up with a FAR number that is exactly what we want, uh, it was so stark to see that in contrast to the point one one five that we developed this morning. You know, I woke up and I thought, I wonder what the FAR of those parcels that have redeveloped since two thousand and five really was? The orange ones. And, you know, it tells us that the direction that we were going in would have yielded, you know, a, a contraction of half your retail restaurants. And so preserving that with that additional step of no net loss uh is critical. It'd be nice to see it grow. Uh, maybe it will grow. I think that there is some saving grace in terms of the pink line amendments will return conforming uses to spaces that they don't necessarily have it that are within that corridor. So we're we'll see some rise in restaurant retail in areas where there's non-conforming uses because of just the changes to the pink line map. Uh, but I just want to thank everybody that contributed to this and thank those bodies that uh, the planning commission that needs to get to this uh for the work that they'll do, because this really is a, a huge improvement. Islanders are gonna see effectively a doubling of restaurant retail. If they were to walk over to the Hadley and just uh imagine twice the restaurants and twice the retail uh and then add some, that's what, that, that's what you would expect in a new uh redevelopment on any of the parcels that we're talking about. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
Uh, Mayor, if I may, quickly, the answer, the answer to the question is by adding that parcel, the FAR would be revised to point two five six nine.
I'm, I'm, what was the, what was the number? I'm sorry.
Uh, zero point two five six nine.
Okay, so, so, okay.
I'm willing to argue for calling for rounding that to point two six.
Yeah, I feel like that's too much of a change for that small parcel with the overall um the overall square footage.
It's twenty two thousand one hundred and forty eight square feet per the King County assessors data.
Happening. Hey, Jeff, Jeff, if you could just shoot me that, the, the, the data that you use for that math calculation, I'd just like to take a look at it. I don't want to take any time right now.
I'll, I'll, I'll admit that doesn't seem right if it's twenty two thousand divided by a million. It should decrease the ratio by around point two two, and you're saying I think it went up by more than twice that amount. Something doesn't smell right.
Well. So where we go? So I'm happy to send it out. Now you've got me paranoid, so I'm gonna double check my math here really quick.
Deputy Mayor White, in the meantime.
Yeah, so to give Jeff a minute to do his math without everyone looking at him, I'm just gonna say thank you to the subcommittee of Saleem and Benson and was it Craig? Sorry, Mrs. Erdwin.
Yes.
You math majors, thank you very much for your great work on this and um totally concur with the recommendations and thank you guys for uh, for doing all that work all this time and um I think it's good work and I'm excited to support it. So Saleem, if you're ready to make a recommendation when we're done doing the math, um, I think it's a good plan and vision going forward. Should I keep talking, Jeff, or do you have the number?
No, my, my math was confirmed at point two five six nine, so I'll send that out to the council so you can see it. But it's taking the one oh six five number, adding twenty two one four eight to it, and then taking that new denominator of one oh eight seven four two one and plugging it into the calculation and getting a uh point two five six nine. So I'll send that out to the council so you see it, that I've done the math and I've found the same answer twice, so.
I, I, I apologize. You're probably right. I was thinking it was an adjustment to the numerator. It's the denominator. That's right. So it's plausible. It's counterintuitive.
Uh, Councilmember Androl.
Um, no, I'm, I'm just gonna, I'll look at the numbers. I'm not gonna debate it right now.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Nice.
Uh, so I wanted to make sure the council had another option. Uh, the parcel that we're talking about has a small office building already constructed on it. Again, it's not likely to redevelop in probably the next twenty years. Uh, you could add the pink line down seventy seventh, exclude that parcel and keep the point two six, because it's not dilutive to the FAR ratio at all by not adding it in. And I think if anybody's squeamish about point two six dropping to point two five, doesn't want to round, you know, the point two five up, uh, we could just pink line it down seventy seventh and keep that parcel uh out of the, the FAR calculation.
Aren't we spot zoning then?
Spot zoning. Um, what we're saying is basically, what we're saying is that we don't expect it to redevelop in the zoning horizon that we're, we're aiming for.
You never know.
There's an office building there. It's it's not like it's a vacant lot.
Right, could be nicer. Those cool condos going across the street.
Okay, um, any inclination to um follow Councilmember Nice's suggestion? Are we just gonna go down the east side of seventy seven? This is what we already sort of gave a thumbs up on. So Councilmember Reynolds, are you suggesting carve out that one?
I, ye- yes, because I think it's helpful to preserve the FAR ratio. I'm, I'm already a little nervous that it's as low as it is, and I don't want it to go any lower.
Okay, so uh, with thumbs up, if you are, uh, want to carve out that one parcel on the east side of seventy seven.
Can I just ask what Jeff thinks of that recommendation?
Um, I, I think it's a reasonable no point to, to move forward with. Um, the great, the great news about code is if we foresee it as some sort of issue in the future, we can always come back and address it, so.
And the intent is to try to maintain FAR of the point two six. Um, so anyway, all those in favor of carving out that one parcel?
I guess, I guess I'm not, I'm not understanding why we're not adding that parcel to the numerator as well. So I'm not prepared to really say one way or the other on this right now, because it's, this is happening on the fly and it's, and it's not clear to me. Like I said, I asked to see the calculations and so um can't we, can we make this decision the next time?
Jeff, you are going to go to the planning uh commission? Do you need this particular issue resolved, City Manager?
Uh, yeah, we are trying to get
Uh, yeah, we are trying to get to a handoff to the planning commission if possible this evening. I, I guess, um, I, I feel everyone's uh, uh, concerned about doing math on the fly. Thanks, Jeff. Do, do we need a break to exchange the math? Do you need, I, I, I don't know what, what, what can we do to help at this point?
Let me, let, let me take a quick swing at explaining it. So my under, so the parcel size is twenty-two thousand one hundred and forty-eight square feet. Uh, based on my understanding of the current use of the property, it's not contributing any square footage to the, to the restaurant retail calculation that we're trying to do. So that, that number is zero, so zero's being added to the numerator. But adding the parcel size, if we want to include it as part of the group of parcels that will be subject to the FAR requirement. So then the denominator needs to increase by two thousand, twenty-two thousand one hundred and forty-eight. So when you leave the numerator stagnant and you increase the denominator, you're going to be driving your FAR calculation down.
Also, I don't understand, I, you're only, the numerator only includes um, retail, not commercial?
Commercial defined, defined in CoStar with those retail restaurant uses that we're trying to achieve. That was the data draw that was done by community attributes, yes.
Is that three hundred and nine?
So office, office space is not included in that.
So bank space isn't included? Like bank wouldn't be included?
If, if I'm wrong about the use of the parcel, then we probably need to investigate that further, so. Sarah?
Yeah, that parcel is uh, one hundred percent commercial office use, so no banking. It's all individual, full proprietor and other types of organizations. So yes, Jeff's correct, it would have zero retail square footage.
I don't, yeah, I don't, I didn't understand that that type of use would be excluded. I kind of tend to think it should be included, but that ship's probably sailed.
So Councilmember Androl, with that not included, um, we're should we just do a thumbs up? Let's just say again, if we're, is there consensus on excluding that one particular parcel? In order to maintain the FAR at the point two-six?
I, I think you've gotta be a little bit more clear about what you're asking for. Does it get a pink line and it's blue, or does it get a pink line and it's orange? It's, it's a, if it's a pink line and it's orange, it's not dilutive to the point two-six. If it's a pink line and it's blue, it is dilutive.
I, I'm interpreted, I'm interpreting the plan in the table to be pink line and orange, correct? That's what you're proposing?
That's what I'm proposing is add the pink line and make the parcel orange, that point two-six will not be diluted. But if that building redevelops, it'll be subject to a retailer requirement.
Well, if it's orange, it'll be no net law, no net, no law.
I know, but there's none, so it's zero, but.
Yeah, right, okay.
If you, if it's pink and it's orange, it's, we stay with the point two-six-two-three and if it redevelops, somebody has to go retail.
So what Saleem said?
Yeah, what Saleem said.
So, pink line and orange, okay? All right, so there's enough consensus on that, okay? All right, so.
I have one more, I have one more amendment I wanna make.
Sure.
Uh, I'd like to make the Shin Hua property. I'd like to color that blue. So the two parcels which are Shin Hua, which is Mud Bay and the King property. If we color those blue, uh, it will not be dilutive to the FAR, it will leave the point two-six-two-three, but to, yeah, the point two-six-two-three. Uh, but if they lose their vesting and their permit, they won't be stuck at the point one-one-one-two. They will be increased to the point two-six-two-three. They'll be subject to the new FAR. So right now they're vested, they're gonna be what they are. It's gonna be way below the point two-six, but it is what it is. But if they, if that permit lapses and they don't redevelop and some other person comes along and buys it, or they come back with a new application, they'd be subject to the point two-six-two-three.
I would, I support that amendment. Uh, Councilmember Reynolds?
I, I'm supportive in concept, but I just want to help understand why would that not be dilutive, dilutive to the FAR?
Because we're not gonna include it in the calculation because they're vested. Like, we have a nexus to say, uh, you don't add that parcel size to the FAR and cause the dilution because they're vested and they're gonna develop at their already planned ratio. But if it falls through, they would be subject to old code, which doesn't really determine any of this. And it would, just, it's a potential for a hanging Chad we don't want.
I, I, I think that makes sense. So, so in effect, what you're suggesting is they're neither blue nor orange. They're, 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 they're blue in the sense that they're subject to the FAR, but orange in the sense that they don't impact the FAR ratio.
Yeah.
Can we just ask our city attorney and planning director if that's okay and compliant with how standard operating procedure works? When we have somebody under development?
Actually, I just, I just wanted to check signals with Jeff. Uh, thank you Deputy Mayor Wyker, before you thumbs up this. Jeff, does that work for you?
Yeah, it's, it's the council's pleasure here to, you know, to, to structure a proposal as they see fit. Um, we've, we've provided, you know, the methodology and the, the sideboards that we put on the methodology and it's, uh, unless Bo disagrees with me, it's, it's the council's pleasure to to uh, to make, um, you know, um, to have discussion and, and um, come up with, with uh, direction that they see fit, so.
Thank you.
You, you just popped on.
I agree, um, provided that uh, their current rights as vested is not being changed. Um, whatever happens in, i- if, you know, in speculating here, if they uh, lose their vesting or they abandon their project and how this is gonna be developed in the future um, is, is, is not protected. Um, so, you know, one thing that I would ask that is, I, you know, Shin Hua may be, the Shin Hua project may be the only pro- uh, parcel that's subject to this right now, that it's the only parcel that's vested yet not developed. Um, but if there is other, I would uh, you know, ask that uh, they, they be treated accordingly. And if they don't develop as well, then they would be subject to the new, um, you know, FAR requirements.
Uh, thank you. Councilmember Reynolds?
Just agreeing.
Okay, so um, is there agreement to include the Shin Hua property as blue? Okay, so we have that as well. Okay, thank you. Any other questions or any other proposed amendments? If not, um, we have a motion, there's three parts. I'd like to see if we can take this as one motion. Is that possible, City Manager, or should we take that as three separate motions?
Oh, Saleem?
Yeah, I was gonna ask, somebody is gonna have to, I, I, I don't know, I think one motion is fine unless the city attorney here, Jeff, feels differently. Saleem, you.
I'm happy to make one motion. So um, I move, one, to update MICC nineteen dot one-one dot zero-two-zero. Open brand B, closed brand, uh, open brand four, closed brand. Retail use required adjacent to street frontages as identified in exhibit one. And two, institute a new town center commercial FAR requirement as presented, which would be subjected to parcels identified in exhibit two as amended nine and three, include a new selective town center no net loss requirement to post two thousand and five redevelopment parcels only as identified in exhibit three.
Uh, did you second that, Councilmember Reynolds?
I, I, I.
I think I, I have an amendment.
Okay, one person at a time, please. Okay, so it, it has been moved. Is there a second? Councilmember Reynolds?
It was, it was Councilmember Jacobson, I believe, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Yes, Councilmember Jacobson did give me the second, but I do have a question. I want to make sure I heard everything correctly. On number one, uh, Councilmember Nice, did you, did you include an as amended comment in there? To make sure it's clear that the uh, east side of seventy-seventh is intended to be changed?
No, but I'll take that friendly amendment.
Okay.
And do we need that on three? Because uh, the third one, did we add a no net loss to anything that's not orange? Who didn't you select?
I, I, I would think you would need to say, and on any vested, vested but not built projects or something to that effect.
Well, that or just as discussed, I mean, again.
I'll do it as discussed.
Yeah.
I actually don't think you need to change three, because by moving the Shin Hua project over to blue from orange.
It changes one, yeah.
They're gonna be, they're gonna be subject to the, the, the new FAR requirement. So you don't need to know that loss, because you'd be increasing it by having it on the blue map. So I think three is fine, just one and two need to be as amended.
Okay, very good.
All right, and so you, the amendments have been accepted. We need to uh, do we need to second that uh, City Attorney, City Clerk?
Jake, you're gonna second the?
I'll second the amendment.
Okay, thank you, okay. All right, um, City Clerk, please conduct the roll call.
Councilmember Nice?
Hi.
Councilmember Androl? Hi. Councilmember Jacobson?
Hi.
Mayor Wong?
Hi.
Councilmember Rosenbaum?
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Wyker?
Hi.
And Councilmember Reynolds?
Hi.
Thank you, motion passes. Let me just say that this process is, this is a complicated issue. And the process was very um, very interesting. I might think it was, it worked out well, so I appreciate all the council members' assistance and all the council's involvement. And of course, the staff, you know, did a fantastic job, so anyway. Thank you very much. For to getting uh, some feedback from the planning commission after this.
Mayor, Mayor Kai? Mayor, can I just add, sorry to interrupt, can I just add one more quick thing before you move on with the rest of your agenda? So, we've got our schedule for running this through the legislative review process and back to council. I do want the council just to be aware this evening, the current moratorium expires on December first. So, we are going to need to come back in November, um, the sixteenth, I assume. With a moratorium renewal to guard against speak, some catastrophe occurring that we don't complete this on December first. Uh, so that you can keep your moratorium intact while the rest of this review process is completed. So I just wanted the council to be aware of that this evening. Um, we will be back for that item as well in November, but uh, hopefully, you know, it'll all work out. We ultimately needed for very long, so, thank you.
And with that, it'll include a possible public hearing, um, if we have to go that route.
It will include the public hearing upfront, so we have to deal with that as well, so.
Okay, correct. Uh, council, we've been at it for about two hours and we still get to go. Uh, I'm, I'm, okay. City manager or house staff doing, can we proceed? Okay, so we now move to regular business. Uh, this is A B fifty-nine forty-three, second review and adoption of the city's updated financial management policies. And wel- welcome back, City Finance Director Matt Mornic.
Good evening, council. Uh, for the record, Matt Mornic, your finance director. I'm gonna be brief this evening, no, no presentation. Um, before you tonight are updated financial management uh, policies that incorporate feedback received during the August thirty-first, thirty-first city council meeting. Exhibit one is the resolution for adoption with a clean version of the latest financial management policies. Exhibit two is a redline version of the policy document that illustrates the feedback staff incorporated from city council. The feedback that council provided on August thirty-first really rounded out the policies with additional information, clarification through more concise language, and where appropriate, more flexibility with how to use budget surplus to further the city's long-term financial goals. So taken together, these revisions really refined efforts from the six-month collaboration between the Finance Ad-Hoc Committee, city staff and outside council. I extend my, my gratitude to Deputy Mayor Wyker, Councilmember Nice and Councilmember Reynolds for their commitment and creativity in drafting these policies. So tonight, staff is looking to address any final questions regarding the policies and recommends that council adopt resolution number sixteen oh-two, updating the city's financial management policies. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, Matt. Uh, any questions? Again, this is our reading. And you have been provided an updated set of the financial management policies. I will give it five more seconds to see if anybody has a question. If not, um, is there a motion to adopt resolution number sixteen oh-two to update the city's financial management policies?
They're moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Wyker and seconded by Councilmember Reynolds to uh, adopt resolutions number sixteen oh-two. Any questions? Same, done. City Clerk, please conduct the roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Rosenbaum?
Hi.
Councilmember Jacobson?
Hi.
Councilmember Nice?
Hi.
Mayor Wong?
Hi.
Councilmember Androl?
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Wyker?
Hi.
And Councilmember Reynolds?
Hi.
Motion passes. Uh, Matt, I suspect you probably expected to get some questions, but you've done such a good job in shepherding this uh, resolution and the policies for the council that obviously no questions were asked. I, I wanna express our special thanks on behalf of the entire city council for your fine work and the fine work of other members of the finance department. Um, obviously, you know, working together with Deputy Mayor Wyker and Councilmembers Reynolds and Nice. Um, proved good process for getting this done. So again, thank you for all your leadership and your drafting of these policies. I think uh, you've placed the city in a much better position in terms of maintaining our fiscal um, sound position, so thank you again, okay?
Thank you, Mayor. We're excited to get to work. Thank you to the Ad-Hoc Committee.
So you got, you got, you got plenty of time now, so uh, or more to do, Matt, more to do. So, okay, so again, thank you very much. Okay, uh, can you believe it? Okay, it's only ten oh-six and we're actually moving to the final item of regular business. Um, this is A B fifty-nine forty-four, authorizing and appropriation, appropriation for outreach services from area shelters for the homeless and update implementation ordinance uh, twenty-one C dash oh-two. And um, joining us um, is Police Chief Ed Holmes.
Hey, good evening, council members. Uh, Ed Holmes, your police chief. And I do not have a PowerPoint presentation here, but I do have some talking points to highlight uh, the important components of Agenda Bill five-nine-four-four. So very briefly, as a point of reminder, back in February on the sixteenth, the council adopted ordinance twenty-one C oh-two, which essentially prohibited camping on all public property. At that same council meeting, you directed me to come back in six months with a report on how our enforcement experience has been with this ordinance. So, here I am, about six months later, and I am very pleased to report that we have not made any arrests for violation of the ordinance. Uh, nor have we made any, uh, or issued any citations for violation of the ordinance. But we have learned a few things. And one of the things we've learned is that this ordinance does give us uh, reason to make contact with people experiencing homelessness. We've learned that uh, some of the people we contact will take us up on our offer to connect them to the mobile crisis team. Even though that mobile crisis team focuses primarily on behavioral health emergencies, like mental health concerns or uh, substance issues, um, they'll still take us up on some of those offers. They'll still take us up on some of those offers. And we've also learned that uh people experiencing homelessness can benefit greatly from the services of a qualified outreach worker. Despite our best efforts um as police officers, uniformed police officers, we understand that not everybody always wants to talk to us. So. Connecting with someone who uh is qualified in outreach services uh can be very helpful. This summer, a number of us staff toured two area shelters. And if you've heard me talk about these before, you've heard me say that we were pretty much blown away by the services. These shelters provide. We toured the Sophia Way, which focuses primarily on women and families. And we also toured the congregations for the homeless, which focuses primarily on men. And these shelters uh provide so much more than just a bed to rest your head. Uh these shelters provide full wraparound services. They provide services that help people get their I D, help them get a job. They provide mental health counseling, they provide substance abuse counseling, and they provide uh pathways toward permanent housing. These shelters also have outreach workers that go out in the community and connect with people experiencing homelessness. Except Mercer Island is not currently in their jurisdiction, their outreach jurisdiction. When we were at these shelters, both shelters expressed an interest in including Mercer Island if we could come to some sort of an agreement. So at the August thirty one council meeting, uh the city council directed staff to um. Research what that would look like and to come back tonight with um. An agenda bill that would contemplate entering into relationships with the Sophia Way and congregations for the homeless for those outreach worker services. So. For a fee of ten thousand dollars each, so a total of twenty thousand dollars. The Sophia Way and congregations for the homeless would include Mercer Island in their outreach worker area through December of twenty twenty two. So we're here tonight uh with this agenda bill, asking for authorization. For the city manager to sign such agreements, to negotiate and sign these agreements. I have Tamby Cork, Y F S administrator and Mike Seifert, our operations commander with me here tonight.
He froze up.
If there are any questions, so with that, my interest was in keeping this brief and succinct, and I am happy to answer any questions.
I think, uh, Mr. Mayor, I think you were actually frozen, but.
Is I frozen? No.
Now, now you are unfrozen.
Okay, wow, I couldn't tell. Um, all right, I'm sorry. It was me, not you. Uh deputy mayor Wiker.
Yeah, chief, I just want to thank you for your great work in the last sixty seven months while you've been doing this. Uh heavy lifting on top of your already busy schedule and workload and managing your department. And I want to offer the floor to Mike Seifert, so he can tell us about the operations and how this might work with the nonprofits, because it's my understanding you and he has been working closely about. How this might work and how this will be operational, and um I think you both are great to have at the helm, leading this work. So just want to thank you so much for doing it and getting it done quickly, and especially now that um. Winter is coming and COVID is still here and folks are gonna be needing some shelter who might otherwise be challenged in that regard. So thanks to you and Mike, I want to offer Mike the floor.
Uh deputy mayor, thank you. So for the record, Mike Seifert, the operations commander here for the police department. And I your question specifically is just how would this look on the operational way with the police? What it does, so we try to contact people um as much as possible. We usually get a call or we'll see somebody who. Looks like they could use assistance or information pass along to them. Um very often, as the chief said, they don't want to talk to a uniformed police officer. Um after the First Amendment, the other thing people know most about their rights is they have a right to remain silent. So when we see a police officer, we tend to walk away um unless there's something that we want from them. Um we do call the mobile crisis team and have had some success with mobile crisis team coming out, but the mobile crisis team does not specifically. Help people that are that are not having a mental crisis or having a mental health issue at the time. That's what they're there to do. They do have resources. They do have ways to connect people. Um with the same sort of resources that we would get through these outreach, but where these outreach uh workers can really succeed is they can. They have a plethora of things they can show that the mobile crisis team focus specifically on the crisis maybe wouldn't be able to do. Um so we as officers, especially when we have um people that we've contacted maybe on multiple occasions. Instead of going out and trying to talk to them ourselves, or they may walk away, we might not see them for a few more days. We could actually call the outreach workers, have them come out. Um in operations, we don't know how it's gonna work specifically yet, just because we haven't done it. Um but in theory, that's how it would work. We'd have somebody who we know who maybe benefit from talking to the outreach worker. We know the outreach worker. Um can speak in a manner that a uniformed police officer necessarily, not that we can't, but it's gonna be received in a different way. So that's how I would foresee that working.
Thank you. Council member Andorl.
Um, no, I'm good. Sorry, I didn't. I I may have a question, but I was I was just um. Didn't have anything right this moment.
Okay, um well, there's no other questions. Certainly would like to entertain a motion. If uh again, if there's no questions, council member Nice, hand up.
You're muted, Celine.
First time for everything, right? I I'll make a motion, but I wanted to first just make a few thank yous. I wanted to thank the chief and the commander for uh organizing this agenda bill, bringing it forth and for your report. It's, you know, heartening to hear that. Twenty one C O two has allowed you to make additional connections that you you hadn't made in the past, couldn't make in the past necessarily. Uh and it's just heartening to see that you're able to learn more, have more interactions and come back to council. Uh with a really targeted kind of focus on what resources uh will best meet the demand. Uh one thing that I have thought about, the more we have kind of developed these connected services to people that have. Uh not just experiencing homelessness and houselessness, but just in general, the housing security needs. But we have a lot of programs that we're funding, but we're doing it in a real um disconnected way. And if there would be a way for. Uh maybe the finance department to aggregate these things into a bucket of assistive measures to help with housing security and homelessness and houselessness. I mean, a a few of them that we've talked about just this year and we've been funding over the last couple of years pretty aggressively. Is the Y F S assistive housing funds. Uh we in the pandemic increased that funding significantly, the arch contributions. Uh the east side shelter assistive uh payments that we're making, these additional outreach officers. Uh Y F S certainly is integrated in this effort. And then the new mobile integrated health, you know, if we had a way, and those are all things that are discreetly funded. But in different parts of the budget of trying to pull that together for future councils, so they can see that that is kind of a. Strategic outlay of resources towards this issue, which is obviously a very complicated issue. I think it would be helpful. So with that, I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute an agreement. With both the Sophia Way and congregations for the homeless in an amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars, ten thousand for each organization. For outreach outreach worker services for individuals experiencing homelessness through the end of twenty twenty two.
I'll second it. But I would also like to speak to it for a minute.
Yes, go ahead, council member.
Yeah, um I I had my hand up and then it was down and now it's up again. Um I did want to thank Ed, uh chief Ed and commander. For your efforts on this. It is um heartening to know that that the ordinance is working in the way that we hoped it would be as a tool to connect people to services. I think this is this next step, which is just an add on um to to the way we were hoping this would play out is is wonderful. So thank you for your efforts on it and the. The compassionate enforcement. I appreciate it.
Welcome. It truly has been a team effort and to include Y F S and Tamby's help there, but uh I thank all of you for your support with the with this.
Great, thank you. You know, I'm uh gonna speak in support of this motion. Uh while I will be off the council after uh the end of twenty twenty one, I see this motion. As only the start of a broader conversation discussion that this council and this community need to have. Determining how the city can play a bigger role in addressing the regional homelessness crisis and the regional lack of affordable housing. Hopefully, when the city has opportunities in the future to help those who are less fortunate. For instance, through increased support for arch to help address the lack of affordable housing. This city and this community will continue to show the compassion that has shown in the past. And look for new ways to increase the amount of help that we can provide. Uh council member Reynolds.
I just wanted to briefly uh thank the chief on this. I I think it's a tremendous opportunity, a tremendous idea. And I think it's it's a reflection of the fact that everybody has to recognize in every organization, every person. Where their core competencies lie, and I I'm a a huge fan of the chief and the Mercer Island Police Department, but this is an example where he's recognized that. There's an outside organization that is better able to address certain situations and and. Recognizing that and reaching out to them to make it happen is a great thing, and I think it's a win win.
Thank you. Uh any other comments? We have a motion uh before us that's been seconded. Uh no other questions, so at this time, ask the city clerk to conduct the roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Count Jacobson.
Hi.
Council member Reynolds.
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Wiker.
Hi.
Council member Andorl.
Hi.
Mayor Wong.
Hi.
Council member Rosenbaum.
Hi.
And council member Nice.
Hi.
Great, thank you very much. And thank you, chief, and thank you, commander. The next um regular meeting, I'm sorry. Sorry, Jesse. So we now move to other business than planning schedules, so uh city manager Jesse Vaughn.
Uh given the hour, seems it seems that I always start this uh section of the agenda with that comment. I will uh just be brief, but I do need to call out uh a change to the October fifth meeting. Shortly after publishing your packet, uh as luck would have it. Uh I had to remodel the agenda for October fifth. I need to set aside a fairly big. Chunk of time that evening for an executive session, possibly one on the front side and one on on at the end of the meeting. So we've talked internally, we're moving the ARPA funding discussion to October nineteenth. I'm actually gonna broaden that agenda item a bit uh to free up some time. Also, the town center moratorium showing up on October fifth is not needed. So more to come, council, on uh how October fifth will look, but I did want to let you know I made that change. And I will stop there.
Okay, thank you. Um any upcoming council member absences to report? Uh I'm sorry, council member Rosenbaum.
Yeah, I just had a real quick question about scheduling. Um Jesse, I I was thinking back, I've got this also with my council member reports. Uh for the superintendent's advisory council and the P T A average speech council. Thinking back to our work when we decided not to put a levy on the ballot back in June. There was a question about staff bringing back some potential opportunities to fund some of those positions. Do you have a sense as to when we might be seeing that?
I I I apologize, you did send an email to me earlier this week and I have yet to respond to it. I anticipate that would be uh something we'd bring up at the planning session in February.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, are there any council member absences to report? Okay, uh council member reports, um council member Reynolds.
Nothing to report.
Council member Jacobson. Council member Jacobson, you're on mute.
For sure. Uh nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. Council member Nice.
Nothing to report.
Council member Rosenbaum.
Uh I'll defer to you, Mr. Mayor. You were gracious enough to cover the pick meeting, uh which was uh held on rush time.
Okay, uh. Mayor Wiker.
So our Mercer Island High School marching band performed at the Seahawks game on Sunday. It was epic. It was awesome. There were a lot of proud kids and a lot of proud parents. You can check out a million videos on YouTube, I'm sure, and find them on Facebook. Um the second thing I'll shout out to our M I Y F S staff who are organizing this pumpkin walk on October twenty third from five to eight. And with their Burbank Park, I'm hearing buzz about it all over the place, so well done. I don't even have little kids anymore.
I know. Deputy Mayor Wiker, I have some late breaking news. It does not sound like the pumpkin walk is going to happen. I had not, I just heard this afternoon from the foundation, so I will follow up with you and make sure. I have correct information out to the community. I'm so sorry to cut cut interrupt your report.
Oh, that's important. That that'll be useful to know and get out there. People might do it anyway. Um that's it. So those two cool things, or maybe at least one cool thing.
Okay, thank you. I just two two. All right, two things for me. Um earlier today, I attended the workshop number four for elected officials regarding the King County's. Proposed Clean Water Plan. I've mentioned this clean water plan to you folks uh before. I hope somebody really starts diving into this thing. This is a long term, actually has a forty year horizon. So again, truly a long term plan. To basically find ways uh to develop ways to protect the quality of our water system over the next several decades. The workshop number five is scheduled for October twenty two. Okay, so if you haven't attended an earlier workshop, it doesn't matter, okay? They'll catch you up, but I strongly encourage uh council members to attend. And learn more about this plan because it's gonna have a major impact on rate payers. Okay, so again, encourage you guys to do that. Yesterday, I attended a webinar about an initiative to get U S cities to join the city's race to zero campaign. The objective is to build momentum to away from a carbonized economy. And to address the change of the challenge of climate um change. I forwarded uh materials to the city council's sustainability committee. Uh that's council member Reynolds and council member Nice. And uh hopefully we'll have a chance to take a look at this material. Uh they are trying to get cities up to a thousand cities across the country to join in this campaign, excuse me. Uh before November and hope that we'll be able to come back to the full council for further discussion uh sometime next month. So that's all I have. Uh the next regular meeting is October five. And there being no further business before the council. The time now is ten twenty five P M.
Listen, I I I had a a council member report. Sorry, I don't think you got to me.
Oh, sorry, council member Andorl.
No, that's okay. I usually don't, but I'm pleased to report that we did have a utility board meeting last week uh with a full complement of utility board members. And that we had a very interesting presentation from Seattle Public Utilities about the need to replace a segment of water line along Fortieth. It's going to be expensive, but there is a um. There's really cool new technology that I think is gonna it's gonna come before the council to make a a decision in terms of cost. For uh two different types of solutions. Um if anybody wants any more information on that. It it, I'm happy to give it to you, but there is a a slow moving slide going along Fortieth and slow moving slides. You know, two inches over fifteen years or whatever still are very impactful to, you know, concrete or cast iron water lines. So. Something's gotta be done there and in county or uh Seattle Public Utilities is on it, but um like I said, it was a fascinating presentation. I just thought I'd I'd share that and the. The rest of the work in the public utilities department is proceeding apace as we are always reliant on them to do capital projects and improvements. They are wonderful at uh. Of moving forward on these these very big, expensive and important projects. So that's it.
Great, thank you. Again, no business commu- I know other business for the council. The time is now ten twenty six and the meeting is adjourned. Again, as a reminder, the council, please stay seated until city staff has terminated the broadcast. And given the Delta variant and the surge of COVID cases, please continue to be vigilant and to conduct yourselves in a way that works out for each other. Uh good evening and stay safe and healthy.